Down the voice.
The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing, delivery, and filing of this notice on February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Courier-News, the Ethos Sentinel, and Tappin to Warren, and filed with the town clerk of the township Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will now call the roll. Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Croson?
Here.
Mr. Desai?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Here.
Ms. Keller?
Here.
Mr. Valentino? Mr. Weinstein?
Here.
Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
And Mr. Brazil?
Here.
Have form. Thank you, sir. Well, our annual ethics training, so welcome, Mr. Jacoby. Appreciate your time this evening. So as you deliver this, do you have a preference if there's questions? Do you want us to hold to the end? Do you want us to interrupt you? Do you want us to raise a hand? Do you want us to dialogue?
There's issues about conflicts in the back. I'm just going to give you an overview. Of.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I end up defending a lot of these papers.
Put your hand down. We'll give you your mic.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
Can you guys hear? Oh, wow.
Loud and clear, sir.
So again, so my name is Matt Jacoby, and I'm going to do the annual ethics training. What I would suggest is I'm not going to go through the outline line by line. It's there for your reading. The way I like to start this is to kind of use an analogy of what is the board and what is the role of board members? And it's a little, it's unique because, and I can tell you this from my experience, I represent a lot of municipalities. I mean, municipal attorney in a number of municipalities. So I represent mayors and council members, and I represent a lot of boards. They're both elected people. They're both elected officials, but their roles are very, very different. And one of the reasons is the law that governs boards in eight found in eighteen A in this school Ethics Act, et cetera, give boards a different role in managing the district than, say, a mayor of a town. So I can tell you, like, for example, I'm the town attorney in Wayne. In Wayne, it's under the Faulkner Act former government. The mayor is elected directly by the people. He, the mayor, runs all day-to-day operations. He makes personnel decisions, hiring decisions, negotiates contracts. That's his role. He is a business administrator that is there day-to-day to oversee what he wants, but it's his role. Boards don't do that. What boards do is they make policies. They pass policies. They pass a budget. And one thing to remember is when you're in this room, when you guys are collectively together as a board, you probably have more power than any other elected official in this town that directly affects your taxpayers. Why? Because your levy, your tax levy, yours and the regional high school are much bigger than the municipality's. You're developing a budget that has a true impact, much greater than your municipal or your county government on your local taxpayers. The other thing that you guys have a huge impact on, frankly, is property values. People come to towns because of the schools. They don't come to towns because there's too many potholes or not too many bottles. It's the school systems. So when you guys are collectively together, the power of a board is very, very awesome in terms of your responsibilities. As individual board members, though, you don't have the same powers as, say, a mayor or an elected council member on your township committee. And one of the reasons is is that many, many board members, not all, but many board members, have children in the district upon which they serve. And so the way they've crafted the law is they've basically removed board members from day-to-day operational decisions. You're there, and then what the law says is you're there to make sure that the district is well-run. It's not your job to run the district. It's your job to make sure it's well-run. And you hire certain people to make sure that it's well-run. The single most important person that you hire is that gentleman right there, Dr. Mingle. That's your employee. That's the person you guys evaluate. And whoever's in that role is he or she that makes the day-to-day decisions operationally. Your job is, if you're not happy with it, you hold Dr. Mingle responsible. But you set the rules of engagement. You set board policies. The board policies are your laws, just like townships pass ordinances that say you can't park on this street between the hours of two AM and seven AM. You know, we're going to not have plastic bags and legmans or township ordinances are the township's laws. Your board policies are really the board's laws, and very similarly to a township, when a township passes an ordinance, it's law. It has a first reading and a second reading. You guys do the same thing with the ordinance, with policies. You have a first reading and a second reading. It's adopted, and that policy governs. It's the law of the land in Warren Township. It covers the students. It covers the parents. It covers visitors. It covers your staff, and it even covers you. You have bylaws in your board policies that talk about how you govern your meetings, under the Open Public Meeting Act, how you take comments, et cetera. That's your job, is to make sure that the policies are up to date. You craft them, and then you're setting the rules for Dr. Mingle to implement it. And the analogy I like to use is it's kind of like a football team. You look at a professional football team, and there's a coach on the sideline making the calls, do this, you go there, and they have a quarterback, and they got running backs, et cetera. The head coach is that guy right there. He's the guy on the sidelines. You guys are in the owner's box. You guys are in the owner's box. You're financing the operations. You're setting the overall rules. You're funding the acquisition of new players. That's your role. So think of yourself as the Jack Kraft or the Woody Johnson of, and you're making those decisions. You're running the overall operation, and you hired a head coach to have a winning team. And it's Dr. Mingle's job to recruit the best talent for the district. And remember, nothing can go, no hiring decision can happen in a district unless Dr. Mingle recommends it. None. You can't say, oh, we want to hire this teacher. Dr. Mingle says, I don't want, I don't like that teacher. That person can't get hired. You don't have to agree with Dr. Mingle, but the agenda is Dr. Mingle makes the recommendations, the hiring recommendations, and then the board votes on it, either yes or no. And again, the reason is, is that Dr. Mingle has the expertise and the staff around him have the expertise to make the educational day-to-day decisions, and it's your job to question him. Or is this the right person, the right fit, et cetera? And why, and challenge him? Why is this the right person for this job? And if you agree with them, then you vote in the affirmative. And I think it's important for you guys to remember that you guys are all a team. You don't have to all agree on things. It's okay to have discourse on certain items. You might feel passionately about one thing or the other, but at the end of the day, you're a board and majority rules. And so once the majority votes on something, sometimes you'll be in the minority. That's okay. And sometimes you'll be the majority, and very often, a lot of the votes you'll see are unanimous. That's okay. But the goal here is is that you guys are operationally been elected, and you're representing the taxpayers of your town to make sure that the district is well-run. Now, there's a couple of very important things where people, and I'll tell you where people get in trouble. There's clearly things that you that would, you know, are kind of nonsensical, but I should tell you about. If you have a, you're involved in a business, and you start having your business where you have an ownership interest do business with the district, you're going to get in trouble. That's a big no-no. Most people understand that. Where things get a little bit more muddied is very often in the area of negotiations, teacher negotiations. And why does it get muddy? There's very complicated rules about what is a conflict, what's not a conflict. And we have a whole chart in the back of our hand up where you can see, but I'll give you the general overview. What the issue is, is that if you have a family member that works in the district, you're conflicted out. Now, from anything involving negotiations, from hiring or evaluating the superintendent, evaluating the assistant superintendent, you can't be involved. People say, well, how could that happen? Well, if you're a current board member, it's illegal for your family member to get hired by the board. But very often, there are board employees, and their spouse decides later on to run for the board. That's not illegal. They can run if the voters elect them. They're elected. But in that instance, once they're elected, the conflict rules apply. And where people get in trouble is they don't disclose things or they don't ask questions. And what I can tell you is this. One of the most important things that you have at your disposal is you have a board attorney. We have access to all the cases, and we can give you guidance. So if you ever think that there is something that you, ah, this might get me in trouble, I'm not comfortable with this, talk to Dr. Mingle. Talk to Mr. Hagel. They'll reach out to us, and we can give you a written opinion. There are very unique situations, and I'll give you an example of one, where we have the ability to write to the School Ethics Commission on your behalf and get an advisory opinion. And what I tell folks is there's really nothing that you do that's emergent. There's no decision that you have to make tonight, and if you're really uncomfortable abstaining. Don't get involved. If you think it could be an ethical problem, say, listen, I'm not comfortable. I'm going to abstain from this. I don't want to be involved, and I'll talk about that in a second. But because there's nothing is that emergent, you can contact us, and generally, we can give you guidance on, yes, you can do that, no, you can't. Or that's so unique, we'll get an advisory opinion. I'll give you an example. I represent a board in Middlesex County, and one of the board members was a collegiate athlete, gymnast, collegiate gymnast. And after she, it was a teacher retired, et cetera. But she was involved as an NJ SIA official for high school gymnastics competitions. And she would coach, I mean, not coach, referee them or score them. And so she never did it in the district where she was a board member. She would never, she'd always turn down those opportunities. But then she's, she came to the superintendent and said, I just thought about something. They've asked me to be one of the referees at the county meets. What if one of the kids from our district is at a county meet is out of conflict? Well, I can assure you that there's no ethics opinions on that. So we got an advisory opinion. This school ethics commission said, no, that's so happenstance, that would not be a conflict. So she was able to then be a referee at these county meets, even if the students from her own district were participants in it. That's an example of an advisory opinion. What the school ethics commission won't do is they won't give you a go-free from jail pass. So if you vote on something, you can't say, ah, probably shouldn't have voted. Can you give me advisory opinion? Because you have to attest that it actually has not been taken. So my point is, is there's nothing that emergent. Ask Dr. Mingle. If there's a question, we can provide you an answer, and I'd say ninety-nine percent of the time, I can give you an answer, and we'll put it in writing. And why is it important to put it in writing? Because if I'm wrong, and you take action relying on my advice, you're going to be absolved from the school ethics commission if somebody files charges against you. Because you can say, hey, we saw advice. And if you look at school ethics commission decisions, when people have gotten bad legal advice, school ethics commission said that at least they had the wherewithal, the board member, to ask. They're not an expert. They asked it, and shame on the attorney. Now, we won't give you bad legal advice, because if we can't find the answer, we will then tell you, we'll get an advisory opinion. And the school ethics commission is fairly timely in giving out advisory opinions. You have to catch their meeting, but they meet once a month. So generally, it takes about, you know, a month, four weeks, you can get a decision. Now, let's talk about abstentions and recusals. This is incredibly important. If you have a conflict, and people will say, oh, I feel uncomfortable voting on this. I know that person in town. Well, you're an elected official in a town. There's a high probability that you know people that you're going to vote on. That's not a conflict. You might feel uncomfortable, but if it's your best friend in town, and let's say it involves their kid, you might say, I'm going to, I'm going to recuse myself. So let's talk about what is your recusal. So let's just use an example. Let's say it's an HIV case, and it's your best friend's child who is alleged to have committed an act of HIV. And you go to this kid's, you know, parties and family events, et cetera. You're very, very close family friends. If you're going to recuse yourself, you can't go into the executive session, participate in the discussion, come out on the dais and say, I'm going to recuse myself. That's not a recusing. You participated. If you participate in a discussion and then attempt to abstain or recuse yourself from a vote because of a conflict that you have, that's not effective. And there's a very famous case that came out of Marlboro in the area of a planning board where a board member did that through a whole huge hearing, asked questions. And at the end of the whole hearing, said, you know what? I'm going to recuse myself because I have a conflict. I know the developer. Well, the court went all the way up. The court said that wasn't a recusal. You actively participated, and your questions could have swayed people. So if you have a conflict, or if you believe that you have a conflict because of like a very close personal relationship with a family member or something like that, when you recuse yourself, don't, if there's an executive session discussion, say, I'm not going to go in the executive session. And there might be, let's hypothetically say that your company is put in for a bid for banking, and you work for this bank, and your company put in some type of bid. The recusal is if there's going to be discussion in closed session to score the bids or something, you don't go into closed session. You stay out of it. A recusal is you recuse yourself from start to finish. You don't participate in any way, shape, or form. That's when people get in trouble. Now, the things that I want to talk to you guys about that happens a lot, and this is where I see a lot of the problems that come up, is under the law, the School Ethics Act, if you read it, and I have cases there to give you what it says, what the School Ethics Act says, and then some example cases. And a lot of it is just common sense. You can't have a business interest. You can't try to, you know, get a family member hired. Typical things that you'd think about. Where people or board members are getting in trouble is in the area of the Open Public Meeting Act and the Open Public Records Act. So let's be talking to you about the Open Public Meeting Act. Where we are right now is an open public meeting. And in order to have this meeting, this meeting had to be advertised at least forty-eight hours in advance. In your newspaper, the public has to be made aware of it. It's open to the public. There's the public comment, et cetera. So where do board members get in trouble? Board members get in trouble utilizing this device. Board members email one another. And when board members email one another with more than a quorum, and it's, you have a seven-member board? Nine-member board? If you have a nine-member board, if five or more members are on an email, you have a quorum. If you have a quorum on an email, it wasn't noticed to the public. That's a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. It happens more often than you know. So what I tell people is a couple of things. Only, only, only use your official email, your Warren Township BO email. Do not use your work email. Do not use your Gmail. Do not use a Yahoo or a, I just saw somebody had an AOL. It's like, I didn't even know they existed anymore. They did, it does. Don't use that. Use your official. I'll tell you about that in one second. What happens is that people will, you know, there'll be, Dr. Mingle will issue something to everybody for FYI. And then a conversation ensues, and if five or more board members are involved in it, that constitutes a meeting because you're conducting board business, and it wasn't properly noticed. The individual who oversees violations of the Open Public Meeting Act is an individual that works out of Somerville called the Somerset County Prosecutor. You don't want to be involved in a violation of public media. People think that, oh, it's just email. I'll use text. Text counts. If you are texting five or more members by a text, and I'm not too good at group texts, but my kids are really good at it. If you're doing that, that can be a violation of public media. And Benjamin Franklin had a great saying. Three people can keep a secret as long as two of them end up dead. If you text it or you email it, it is out there. You're never getting it back. It's out there for good, and somebody's going to get it. And I can tell you how these come about. And it starts with the Open Public Records Act. So the Open Public Records Act is a law where people have a right to access any board documents that they want. There's very few exceptions. They can't get personnel records. They can't get student records. They can't get attorney-client privileged legal communications advice. But other than that, they could pretty much get anything. People say, well, it was deliberative process. Well, that works really good until you've made the decision, and then it's no longer deliberative, and it's disclosable. So what ends up happening is, and the way people get caught in this, is you'll get an Oprah request from a resident. Say, we want to see all the emails. They'll give a date range between board members discussing a certain textbook. And your IT person will go in and do a search. They'll get all the emails. They'll be redacted for students' names, and they'll be produced. And if you ever look at an email, if we unfortunately have to do this quite a bit, you'll see the email string of all the people on it. And if you, if somebody who's not happy with you, they count five people, they'll say, oh, got a violation of the Open Public Meeting Act. Write down the prosecutor. The other thing, and the reason I said it's imperative that you only use your official email for any board business, is because of the Open Public Records Act. Now, when you do communicate by email on your board thing, what my suggestion is, is you email Dr. Mingle, and if you need to copy anyone else, you blind copy them. So if somebody hits reply all, it only goes to you and Dr. Mingle. All the people that are blind copied will not get copied on it, and that will avoid an Open Public Meeting Act violation. But under the Open Public Records Act, your custodian of records, who is your business administrator, has a legal duty to do a search for all responsive records in connection with an Oprah request. And so there's all types of case law on the subject. But if it's a valid Oprah request, Mr. Hagel has to do the search through his IT department and gather all the information. Well, it's really easy. If all of your emails are on the district's email server, Mr. Hagel can have that searched. But if it's on your Gmail or on your AOL, right, your work, that can't be searched. And I was involved in a litigation a number of years ago where a board member was involved, that they were talking about setting up a random drug testing policy for students, student athletes. It was a super hot topic. People were very divided in the community. And this one board member, who was a huge proponent of it, was doing it on a board email, but unbeknownst to the business administrator, was also using her private email and her work email that the business administrator had no access to, zero access to. She was also posting things on Facebook. Business administrator had zero access to it. You know, the business administrator doesn't go look and search Facebook or search Twitter. They, they search the emails. So what happened was there was Oprah quest after Oprah quest after Oprah quest came in, thousands and thousands of pages were produced in this. One of the people that this board member thought was her friend turned over her emails to the opposition party that had her work email or Gmail or Facebook postings on it, and a lawsuit came in. And in an Oprah lawsuit, what happens is if the lawsuit, it's called the Calis theory. If the lawsuit is filed, and as a result of the lawsuit being filed, documents are produced because they weren't, weren't properly produced before, you have to pay the other side's attorney fees. So it's a punishment. So in that case, there was eleven pages. There was twenty-two thousand pages of documents produced, and emails, and all of a sudden this issue. Eleven pages were produced, and it wasn't the fault of the BA, because the BA had no idea that this was out there. So what happened was the BA, the judge ultimately ruled against the district, but said you only have to pay five thousand dollars of the legal fees. They were seeking a hundred thousand dollars in legal fees. That's the danger, because the BA had no way of accessing it. I was involved in another case, same thing, Oprah. It was an individual who worked for a bank. Now, banking is very, very strict. If you work for a bank and you're an elected official, there's all these internal disclosures, et cetera. This elected board member was using her bank email for certain items. When Oprah request came in, unfortunately, they saw her bank email. They had to contact the general counsel to say, can you do it? A result of it, that person no longer had a job at the bank. They lost their job because they're using their work email. So be selfish. Protect yourself. Protect your privacy. Just use the district email. Do not use any other account. The other thing I'd be very careful of is in terms of social media. What the School Ethics Act says is, as board members, you don't give up your first amendment right. You have a first amendment right to say things, to, you know, oppose, you know, a certain application in town to support something. That's your first amendment right. But what the School Ethic Act says is, and the School Ethics Commission says, is that if you're speaking, if you're writing a letter to the editor, if you're taking a position on Facebook, you have to disclose that you're not doing it on behalf of the board. Although you're an elected official, although you're a board member, you're writing it on your own behalf. You cannot speak as a board member unless the board has gotten together and has authorized you to speak on behalf of the board. And that's where a lot of people get in trouble, is, is the utilization of social media, Twitter, things like that. They get involved in these heated conversations, and they start writing, and all of a sudden, that writing, they don't disclose that they're doing it on their own behalf, et cetera. Somebody comes out. Now, who can file an ethics complaint? Anyone can file an ethics complaint against you. Board member to board member can. The board as a whole can vote to file one, but very often, it's a resident. A resident's unhappy with you, and they file an ethics complaint. Why is it important to avoid? Are you going to go to jail for an ethics complaint? No. But you could be reprimanded. You could be censured. You could be removed from the board. But at the end of the day, you guys are all stewards of the taxpayers' dollars. That's why you're elected. You're here to do the best job you can for the Warren Township taxpayers, create the best possible school system to keep property values up, et cetera, and deliver a great education to the kids here, while watching the taxpayers' dollars. When an ethics complaint gets filed, you have insurance for it. In the law, eighteen A says that you have to be indemnified in the course of your acts. There has to be indemnification. You have to provide a defense. Well, what happens? You guys have insurance. That's great. But guess what? You have an deductible. Those deductibles range from district to district. It can be five thousand, ten thousand, fifteen thousand. I've seen all different ones. So if somebody files an ethics case against you, the district has to cover the deductible. So although you're provided a defense, it's costing the taxpayers funds. And very often, what ends up happening is there are situations where people, and these are all things that can easily be avoided. And the way you avoid it is if you have a question, don't take action. Ask before you vote. Ask before you get involved. And if you make that simple request of us, we can give you guidance right away. You're not going to wait a day or two. We can give you guidance immediately, and then give you a formal written opinion to give you comfort that you're not in violation of the School Ethics Act. I don't know if you guys have any questions or you want to.
Question. On your, on your social media example, is that a, I'm not a social media person. Is that a every post or tweet or something, you have to say, this is it? Or can you just do a banner, whatever I say?
Usually, what I've seen is, is that the very beginning, it says, you know, this is not an official Warren Township. This is my own, my own media source. Anything on here is my own opinion, not that of the board. And I think if it's, I don't know how it works, but I think on Facebook, you could do that, like on your face page, and then all the comments would be below it. But you got to be very, very careful when you're on social media. We've been involved in a litigation which we won on behalf of Hackensack, but I can tell you that in Glenn But I can tell you that in Glen Rock, these were elected officials, uh, 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 the municipality side, just to give you an idea. Uh, but in Glen Rock, they lost. And it was, they were using the, in, in, uh, my partner, Steve Kimen, won it for Hackensack. And what happened in Hackensack was Merrill LaBrosse and his team, the LaBrosse team, created a Facebook, Twitter, and I don't know, do social media. But they created a face. I know it was a Facebook and I think Twitter or Instagram. The LaBrosse team, and they were doing stuff on their, their email. After the election, they shut that down. Well, during the election was going on, there was somebody that was attacking them. It was election-related. They blocked that person. But they, they, there was a clear, clear demarcation between the election. It was electioneering versus having some type of official communication. And they shut it down and then they used their, uh, you know, Hackensack Facebook for related to the town. That, there was a legal challenge over that. Somebody, their adversary in the election sued them. We prevailed. In Glen Rock though, um, we didn't represent Glen Rock. It was a different thing. They had used their uh, election stuff. And then they kind of brought it over. They were continuing, kind of what Donald Trump was doing with, with his Twitter. He did a pre-election and post-election and then started blocking people. You gotta be careful because you can get in your situation in, in, in creating a First Amendment violation. Um, because if you create an open, a limited open public forum under the First Amendment law, that's what Facebook and this stuff is. You, you gotta be careful who, if you block people and not block people. So if you're going to run for election on, on, and utilize, and people do utilize Facebook, you have to. Whether it's Facebook or Twitter, or what, whatever the, the flavor of the day is, if you're running for election, people are using social media. You want to keep the electioneering part of it separate from board business. If you have a Facebook page and you like to inform people what's going on in the community, make it a separate Facebook page different from, you know, Matthew Kobe for Board of Ed. You want to keep it separate because when people take the Matthew Kobe, and the reason they do it frankly is they get a lot of followers on one. Then they, they don't want to have to recreate it. They want, they're, they're lazy. So they just keep on using it. And it, it, the perfect example was Donald Trump. He did it with Twitter. He had millions and millions of followers when he was running for president. And then when he became president, he had millions and millions of followers. And when people started criticizing, he was blocking them. And there's litigation over that and he lost. They said, you can't block people. You have an open public forum. You can't pick and choose who comments on you, in your forum. So just be very, very careful. My suggestion to you guys is there should be one official Facebook page, whatever the board decides with Dr. Mingle. There should be one official site where people, your residents get information, social media information from on behalf of the board. Doesn't mean you can't have your own. You can have your own. But if you're going to comment on your own, make sure you're disclosing that those comments are your own and your own only. You're not speaking on behalf of the board. Official communication should be on an official site. And I know you guys probably post things on your website, so, school closing, changes in masking, whatever. You post that, that people should be trained to go to that site. Um, and, and because it's confusing. If people have to go to different board member sites, that, that confuses the public and you want to try to avoid that.
I think we do have one site. This, uh,
Thank you. Um, so you're talking about the ethics claims, how the board has to pay the if that claim's unfounded or dismissed or something like that, can the board attorney go back and get that money back that was spent on the deductible?
No. No, no, no. Yeah, there's no, yeah, unfortunately, in the area of school ethics, there's no fee shifting. Yeah, so that's just money that lost.
So what happens if someone maliciously is just accusing board members of ethics violations, wasting the board money?
Well, that, that does happen. Um, if they do it, you know, more than once, you know, they do it several times and it's frivolous. Um, you could then maybe go into court and try to get some type of an injunction against them, but that's spending more money. Generally, what happens is you can't stop people from filing. I mean, you know, you can't stop people from filing lawsuits. And it, it, it costs like three hundred dollars to file a lawsuit. School Ethics Commission costs nothing. So you can't stop people and you guys should all know that you're indemnified. And if somebody files a frivolous action against you, you guys should know that you're indemnified and you're going to be protected. Because if you're not, who would run for a board of ed? You're not doing this for the money. It's a lot of time. So it's a huge commitment to your, your neighbors, your friends, your family to be on a board of ed. So you need to be indemnified. My point is, is that you want to just be cautious to avoid that. But if you have somebody out there who's just a, you know, somebody who's threatening and files it, don't worry about it. You'll get defended. Uh, but there's not a, a fee shift thing where you can recover, recover that money. Yeah, and, and the board, and I can tell you five thousand dollars is a drop in the bucket. If these go to trial, I mean, these could literally be tens of thousands of dollars of money. Because there's actually a whole trial that goes along with these.
And I just had a second one, sorry. So the, our ethics training is today, obviously. There's a couple of new members on the board. Are we like, okay from this point back? Or like, say, say someone used their personal email in January and then an ethics violation came up after today, would our emails from January before this training be you know, recoverable or discoverable? From the moment we got sworn in, right?
Like, that doesn't mean, I think that you're a new board member. And if, if something was to come up, you were defended and say, you're a board member, you're an attorney. And generally, just because you're using, using your personal email.
Makes everything discoverable.
Well, no, what happens is if there's an Oprah request, so what happens is we have, we have certain, I have certain boards or certain members say, I might use them in the board. I refuse. So they're elected officials. There's really nothing I can do to prevent it. But then what we do is we then have the BA write them a letter and have them certify that there's nothing on their emails or their text messages that are responsive just to give the BA cover. And the reason that's important is the business administration, if they voluntarily filled out their jobs, Mr. Hagel couldn't find Marcelli. He cannot feed them that. And I think they're fine for a thousand. They go for five thousand dollars. It's really to help protect the district. But my advice is, deal with it. They're just a family. They're just themselves. They're just a family.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, to Ryan's question, it doesn't, it doesn't start from, this is not day zero with the ethics training.
When you took the oath of office, yeah, when you took the oath of office, you swore up all the Constitution of the United States, Constitution of New Jersey, state laws of New Jersey, et cetera. School Ethics Act is in eighteen A, which is the law in New Jersey. So you, you, the fact that you're getting the training now, you're, you're still obligated to comply with being ethical. Using the emails, your own personal email and stuff like that, that's not really ethics. The problem is, is that if you're using it, you're subjecting yourself and your privacy where I'll have to go to you, Mr. Valentino, and say, please give me all of your, go to your Gmails and see if you have anything responsive. Who wants to do that? And it'll help Mr. Hagel sleep better at night knowing that there's only one place that he has to look to find responsive documents. And you have to understand, people use Oprah. The, there are certain people who use it for very good, laudable purposes, but there's a whole group of people that use it to, they weaponize. And frankly, there's a lot of attorneys out there who have been very smart. So they've used it as a way to make a lot of money. They find people who file Oprah lawsuits. They, they win and they get their legal fees. And probably one of the most famous cases happened in, I think it was Greenbrook, where they didn't produce the right document. Um, Gannett, which is, was Asbury Park Press, had a thing called, um, data universe, where you could look up like any public official's salary. And Gannett, um, or Asbury Park Press at the time, did an Oprah request. I think it was on Greenbrook. But it was, it was definitely one of the Somerset County towns. And, um, they said, we want your data in a, an Excel format. Your spread, your payroll data in a workable format, an importable format. And the town sent them the exact data, the ADP data is a PDF. And they said, no, 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 we don't want it as a PDF. We want it as a workable format. So they could upload the documents. They refused. So they had the data. They just didn't have it in the right format. Lot of litigation went through. I think that the legal fees in that case surpassed a half a million dollars. And they lost and they had to pay a half a million dollars. So that's the problem with Oprah is, is there, there's real consequences if you get it wrong. Anything else? Sure.
Award map, me, let's pick on, I use my personal Gmail account. There's a request, so, and I say, I don't have any. And it comes to find out, well, it does happen. We just didn't provide. Does that, does it then go into like a second round of discovery where or, or am I just guilty at that point? How does that all?
So i- if you, if you're using your own personal email, your Gmail account, for example, there's an Oprah request for documents that you allegedly drafted. You say, I don't have any. But it turns out you actually did it and somebody finds out about it. What could happen? Well, um, there'll be a lawsuit. There'll be litigation because Oprah cases are litigated in Superior Court. And in Superior Court, you can be put under oath on a stand and say, did you have any? No, I don't have any. And if somebody produced it, you just committed perjury. That's a pretty serious, pretty serious act. Yeah, so you don't want to do that. You know, you'd also get in ethics trouble frankly, because you've now lied on behalf of the board. You know, so, you know, that would be very dangerous. You, you basically, you know, it, somebody, you know, I use the Ben Franklin thing, three people can keep a secret. It's true. Once it's out there, somebody's got it. I mean, you know, I can't tell you how many times I've gotten involved in, with cases where teachers have got a lot of trouble. They use, I think it's called Snapchat, where you like send a picture and then like after a few seconds it disappears. Well, I had one teacher was sending really gross graphic things on the Snapchat, thinking, this isn't great. I can get away with it. Well, the person they were sending to was screenshotting every one of them. So that wasn't kept a secret. The other thing that you gotta just be mindful of is that if you make a mistake, it's much better if you say, I, I think I messed up. Go to Dr. Mingle. Let us get involved in it. Because generally, it's the cover up that's much worse than the actual crime. So it's not a crime. If you make, people make mistakes. It's okay. But if I know about it, I can help guide it so that it doesn't mushroom into a bigger issue. It's if you, if you lie, that's when people get in trouble. Anything else? And again, if you don't have it, something comes up and you think about it afterwards tonight, or you're reading it, just ask Dr. Mingle. He can shoot me an email and I can get back to you with a question. Is it, now, have you? All right. Thank you very much, everyone.
Thank you. Appreciate your time. Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm, is this thing? Um, I, I just want to make sure that we're not missing something. I thought we were holding off on a conversation about the norms until this discussion. But we didn't actually hear from Matt about anything relating to the norms. So, did that change?
I would say if there are any specific questions about that that are addressed in here, bring them up now for sure, or we can follow up on it.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any questions about the norms. I understand them pretty well. It, it's just, we had this inquiry at an earlier time from a board member regarding interaction with the public, which is constrained to the president um, during open session. And that's how it appears in the norms. And, um, there was language that was proposed by some board members uh, seeking to change that. And that was tabled until this meeting. So I don't, I don't personally have any questions. I just don't want to let Matt go and then we're thinking.
The big question that would be about, um, because there was, there was a suggestion about changing bylaws around, uh, who speaks on behalf of the board and things like that. And should individual board members respond to public comment versus the board president and the superintendent?
Well, I, so I, so I wouldn't recommend doing that. Let me just, let me just tell you what my, what my practice is, or what my suggestion is. You elect the board president. The board president doesn't have any more power than any one of your elected officials. But generally, the board president is the spokesperson for the board. Just like Doctor, or Dr. Mingle. They were the ones that responded. And very often, the questions from the public would be addressed by Dr. Mingle because they're probably operational in nature. What I suggest is, and in a lot of places, they don't have a back and forth dialogue. You have to understand, open public meeting has to have a public comment period. It's called public comment, not called public discussion, public debates, public comment. The public is here to watch you guys do business. They can get up and comment. You're not under any legal obligation to respond. You can if you want. Generally, what, what you do, if you don't know the answer, you, you, uh, the board president would ask the superintendent, can you respond to this? Oh, I don't know the answer to that. We'll look into it and get back to you. But I don't recommend that you have it being any board member responding. Why? Because then you're going to start getting into a dialogue. And that's not productive. It's supposed to be a comment. Thank you for your comments. And many boards, I represent a number of boards and a number of public bodies where they take all the public comments, don't have any dialogue, and after public comment is closed, they then respond. And they're limited to, you know, three minutes or five minutes per speaker. You get one chance at the mic. You don't get repeated chances. And then after public comment is closed, you respond. And the reason being, let me just give you an example. In Wayne, two weeks ago, they, they have an arboretum. And there was a big issue about this arboretum because they're putting up deer fences. And about forty residents came up upset about the deer fence. Well, if the BA or a councilperson answered every one of those people, we, I'd still be there. So what they do is they take all the comments and then they say, okay, can we go, this engineer addressed these comments about this? And that they collect all the data. So very often what they do is they collect the comments and then they have people respond at the end. If you want to have a dialogue, I, I think that that's dangerous, but I definitely would not recommend that you just have board members ask, like, for example, you, you're a board member. You could say, uh, Mr. Mingle, that was an interesting comment. Can, could, would you uh, care to respond? Or you have an answer to that person? That's generally how I see it done. And I think it's, you know, again, remember something. This is your meeting. It's notice to the public. It's a public comment, not a public dialogue, not a public debate. That's not productive. You're here to do business. At the end of the day, you have an agenda. You've got books to approve, curriculum to prove, bills to pay, people to hire, people to accept retirements. There's a whole jo, that's your job. If you get lost in the public comment section, you're not really doing your job. The whole public comment section is, you know, let the public have feedback. And very often, you say, we'll look into it and get back to it at the next meeting. That's okay too. You don't have to give an answer to everything because you might not have the answer to give at that time. Or it might be something you're not able to answer on. It's a personnel issue. It's a student issue. You can't answer it. You say, we understand it. We hear you. But we're constrained. We can't respond to you because it involves personnel.
Is that the, the norms? I didn't know what you meant by norms.
Sorry, so just to, just to clarify then, nothing legally precludes a board member from responding to a member of the public during public commentary. Provided it's not, um, confidential information.
I, I don't, I don't have the bylaws memo.
So the, the, the norms and the bylaws, I believe, indicate that the president, and I'm not saying that because I'm sitting in this seat. I'm just trying to iterate exactly what it's, what they, what they state.
Usually, the president, if it says that the president would respond, it's just the bylaws. I don't have them. No, I, it's the general, because I can tell you, for example, in, um, in a lot of the towns that I represent, the council president, if you're, if you're not from the government, the council president in Wayne and the summit, um, all the questions are directed to the council president who then answers it. And if you know, that's from the government, the mayor doesn't answer it, the council president, you know, some of the government. The questions are answered to the council president, the council president, then can direct other people to answer it. It's just the key word. Can an individual board member answer a question? Um, I'd have to look at the bylaws, but I would, I would, I would violate the bylaws. And if I was to say that the board chair, what you could ask is to say, you know, or, uh, the president, I'd like to address that person I know about the little league team that's going on there, you know, the club. And you always look to the chair. Generally, the reason you have a chair is it keeps the order in a meeting. Because if everyone starts blocking, then you can start being a failure. So everyone looks to the chair, and in this case, it's, it's the board president as the chair. I think the bylaws, my recollection is that the agenda is set with the, uh, superintendent, the constitution of the board president, the questions to the public are directed to the chair of the meeting, who then will, uh, ask them. So that's, I think, yeah.
So, but is there a law or a statute outside of our bylaws that would preclude a board member from responding to the public? Or is it just a matter of just, uh, board bylaws or? Thank you.
There might be a case out there. I don't want to miss speech. There might be a case, well, I have a commission case that addresses that, you know, the bylaws. That might be, you know, something that you value, but I don't have, you know, that's not a good case.
Any other questions for Mr. J?
Any other questions for Mr. Jacoby? Heads up. Thank you very much again for your time. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Whereas the open public meetings act in May, at say, ten or eleven, for its course of education sessions to discuss certain matters. Now therefore be it involved, the Board of Education is there to close session to discuss material, the disclosure of which constitutes an unwarranted invasion of individual privacy, student matter. Action will be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately fifteen minutes. To be further resolved, the minutes of this close session will be public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second.
Close the favor. Opposed. Board is in executive session. We will go to room one.
Yes.
Motion to return to open session?
Favor. Opposed, sessions, boards in public session.
Resolve that the Board of Education is through the public session minutes of the February seventh, two thousand twenty-two board meeting.
Second. All right, I'll call the roll. Mr. Bishi?
Sure.
Mr. Crowson?
Yes.
Mr. DeSey?
You.
This is Maggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Eric.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
Mr. Ruzi?
Yes.
Motion passes nine zero. Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Ruzi. Uh, there was one in school suspension in Mahorab and two out of school suspensions that ALT reported to the board. And the board on correspondence received twenty-four emails from fourteen unique individuals on return to school topics. And I also shared with the board, uh, approximately twenty-five additional that were not sent to the full board. That's it for correspondence and information.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Welcome, everyone. Thank you for your time and coming out this evening, whether it be in person or virtual. Uh, we do have a couple of special guests that I have invited here tonight. Uh, it is being in Warren, it's not unusual for us to hear about. here tonight. It is being in Warren. It's not unusual for us to hear about athletics, arts, musics, academics from our students. But what is really cool is when you see our students being humans and being leaders. And I think that takes a lot and it's something we need to celebrate a little bit more. So with that being said, I've asked Mr. Hadfield to join us as well as Senorita Ribimbas to tell us a little bit more about Operation Smile. But I do have a couple of questions before we get to the certificates, because I'm hoping the board can learn a little bit more information. Mr. Hadfield, if you wouldn't mind answering a couple of questions I had, just to share a little bit more about your work with this. We'll get you a microphone.
Just want to make sure people at home.
Could you, would you mind sharing with the board and the public how your idea for Operation Smile came about?
Yes. So last year, I was watching an Operation Smile commercial, and a boy came up, and he was on the commercial, and I decided to write a letter to him. And then I had a bigger idea to write my Spanish teacher, Senora Ribimbas, an email saying that, would you like to do an assignment where my class writes smile letters to the kids in South America who have pluck, book, and palette? And she said, we could do my class, but we could also do my, we could do Woodland School and my school at LT. And it's turned into a great assignment. And altogether, we collected two hundred and eleven letters in the end.
Fantastic.
So the letters also went to Panama and Paraguay, and soon photos will be sent of the patients opening their letters and smiling.
Thank you very much for that. It's good to see one idea in Warren, literally going around the world, helping people smile, being humans. So I do have a couple of certificates for yourself and Senorita Ribimbas.
Make sure you smile.
Very sure, sure.
You know, as some, as teachers, we strive to make sure that our kids understand everything that we're saying and that they do what they're supposed to do. But what is even more beautiful is when a kid on his day off, that he's sick, not day off, he's sick, emails me to say, I have this great idea, you know? And it's something that is actually applicable in life, that it's kindness and that they're able to use what they learned in the classroom, because they're the ones who put all the effort to do this. And then he took the lead. He wrote the letter, the sample, and he said, let's do this. And I said, sure. I said, well, I don't know how. I said, but I'll make it happen for you. So I'm really proud of you, Will. Did a great job.
Thank you very much, Senorita Ribimbas. William, this meeting might get a little boring, and I know there's some math homework tonight, so.
Thank you for guys. It's very difficult to get.
You're welcome to stay. But now would be a good time if you wanted to head on out. Thank you very much. Okay, so moving on to the comments. So appreciate the community's continued feedback on the board, specifically with regards to masks or no masks. I know that's been a hot topic, and as many are aware, including myself now, the CDC updated their guidance on Friday regarding transportation. I will let Dr. Mingle speak to that in a little bit. I did share in a previous meeting about our plan to host quarterly dialogues with the community, separate from board meetings beginning this year. And to start this off, before our next board meeting, I don't have the exact details nailed down yet, but our next board meeting is March fourteenth at ALT. The public is welcome to join an in-person discussion with Dr. Mingle and myself prior to the board meeting. We'll get more information on that as that date comes closer. The agenda is yours, as the public, and masks presumably will be optional at that point. So look forward to that. On tonight's agenda, I did want to call out item C two. Thank you to Ms. Lester for answering the call to be a substitute and being a new substitute within our district. And on C four, I did really quick math, and where I came up with ninety-nine years of service between these four individuals, which is, let's call it a century, just to round up. And it's quite amazing. That's a lot of talent. That's a lot of time and a lot of experience that'll be leaving our district. So I did want to certainly acknowledge those retirements. I wish them all the best. A very special thank you to Mrs. Balconis in that list, who was one of the first people that we met when my family moved to Warren. We moved to Warren for the schools, and we were thrilled that she was in the neighborhood. So she's not escaping our help for math, that's for sure. But we certainly look forward to wonderful retirement for all of those. So thank you again for your time. And with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Ruzi. Just a couple of quick things before we talk about mask policy. The Association of Mathematics Teachers of New Jersey, AMTNJ, sponsors an annual math contest, which took place on January nineteenth. Many of our middle school students participated, including those who took on this challenge without even taking some of the math classes that are included in the contest. The middle school team finished in third place in two thousand twenty-two in the state challenge. Congratulations to team members Ethan Rajan, grade eight, Ado and Shen, Ryan Lu and Claire Wu, grade seven, Krishna Singh and Rayhan Shah, grade six. Over five hundred students competed from New Jersey. There were sixteen perfect scores in the competition. Two of those were from Warren Middle School students, eighth grader Ethan Rajan and seventh grader Ado and Shen. Congratulations to all of these students and to Dr. Cooper, who supports the contest. And as you know, we'll celebrate their accomplishments at our May board meeting, and we celebrate all the middle school achievements. I also want to mention that the U.S. Congress designated last week Public Schools Week to celebrate the nation's public schools and their students, as well as the many education professionals and school officials who work to help students reach their full potential. I had the pleasure of meeting with most of our staff members earlier this afternoon to talk about policy updates and things like that, and to extend my gratitude for their work over the past seven hundred and eighteen days, which is how long it's been since we made the announcement that we were closing for two weeks, which is what you can remember we started with about, just about two years ago. I also wanted to mention that Wednesday is Read Across America Day. We have several board members participating. We'll be happy to join you as we're reading on Wednesday. Okay, and then implementation of the mask mandate policy post-state mandate. Let's see. So in July two thousand twenty-one, as everybody knows, we announced our plans as a board for the two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Those plans removed the universal mask requirement when the COVID risk level was low or moderate. Similarly, that plan also called for lesser COVID mitigation measures. We didn't have a daily health screener in the original plan for the year. We said it would only be required once per quarter, as is the matter. The state removed that flexibility in August, as we all know, specifically on masks. At that time, this board passed a resolution that called on the state to allow the district to implement its plan based on local conditions. Had that been the case all year, masks would have been optional for just under two-thirds of the time we've been open in this school year. The exceptions to mask being optional would have been just right before and right after winter break, which, as we all know, was the most challenging time for COVID cases in the community. With renewed flexibility announced from the state last Wednesday, and then, as you all know, the CDC made announcements on Friday as well, we're excited to implement our plan based on the conditions in our area. As has previously been announced, masks will be optional effective Monday, March seventh, two thousand twenty-two. That includes on school buses, now that the CDC has removed that requirement. This will remain the case so long as COVID conditions remain low or moderate. With the removal of the federal requirement, as I said, that also applies to school buses. There have been some questions about the dates of those two removals are different from the different governments. The state of New Jersey says, although I know there are some other districts that are interpreting it differently, that the map, that their mask optional policy applies to everything effective March seventh. So our plan is masks are optional, starting on March seventh. Couple of additions. In addition, we will shift from a daily health screener to a one-time attestation, meaning that on Monday, we will ask everybody to review once again all the criteria for when you do and don't come to work, or send your child to school, and commit to, I don't need to do this every morning at seven o'clock. I know what the requirements are, which was our plan last July as well. And that will, so that will no longer be used in lower moderate risk conditions as well, which we hope will help everybody in the morning, including myself. Both of those changes have the support of the guidance from the Department of Health and the CDC. They're supported by the professional research. They're supported by public health guidelines, and they're supported by medical professionals, including our school physician. The final area of changes in contact tracing. In a meeting with the Department of Health and the Department of Education on Friday morning, the, we, the commissioners of both agencies reminded us that layered mitigation strategies are important. What they mean by that is, we have masking, we layer on top distancing, we layer on top hand washing, cleaning, contact tracing, isolation quarantine, and it's the combination of all of those things that keep us safe. It's not any one of them individually. So their recommendation is that when you're making a change to something big like masks, you are careful about the other variables at the same time. Realistically, however, it's not possible to contact trace in classrooms once there are no masks. If you try to, you would wind up creating classrooms that don't look like the classrooms we want them to look like, meaning students would have to stay in single desks facing one direction. They wouldn't be able to move around. And we want our students to be moving around, collaborating, sitting together on the carpet for stories, eating lunch with their peers, and all the other experiences that require them to be within six feet of each other. Because as you, I'm sure, remember, when masks are up, a close contact goes back from being three feet to six feet, which is the problem with this interpretation. When there are cases during the mask optional period, rather than an individual contact trace, we will begin notifying parents if there's a case so that they have that awareness. So it'll say, in your child's class, there's a positive case. We are not saying that your child is a close contact. We're saying, for your awareness and for your own family's decision-making, we want you to know there was a case in your child's classroom. Maybe you're going to want to put on a mask if you're currently not wearing one. You're going to want to watch for symptoms, but we're not, that's not a close contact by the state's definition. There's no way for us to know that in those classroom settings. And so that information is really just to help parents make decisions about their children. That will apply as well on the bus and in the cafeteria, meaning we will give a generic notification if there's a case, so that people know, in the setting where my child is, there was a COVID case. And now I have that information, and I can take the actions I feel. That is not a close contact by the NJDOH or CDC guidelines. This means we don't then go to the next step of test to stay and all that. It's just a notification like we would have done before COVID for strep or the flu or other kinds of communicable diseases. So essentially, what we're saying is, the time is right to implement our regular communicable disease strategies that are in our board policy. I know that there are some people who may be concerned that removing individual contact tracing is one step too far. However, this is a data-driven decision. Since implementing our test-to-stay program in early January, we have tested somewhere between sixty and seventy students in that program. These are students who were close contacts in school, and only one point six percent of them tested positive for COVID. So what we had to balance was the burden of that process against the benefit and the risk mitigation of identifying them as close contacts. And from our perspective, it's a remarkably small increase in risk for a remarkably high burden on the student, their family, and our school district. So our plan is to move forward with notifying generically, not individually, so that we don't have to put those burdens on people unnecessarily. We will be spending the month of March monitoring what the impacts are. Obviously, if we see cases jump up, we're going to have to figure out what that means and deal with it. Similarly, if cases stays where they are now, which is very low, or even go down further, maybe there's additional reduction in mitigation we can do, which is what our plan has been and our process has been for the last two years. There will be a letter going out to all parents and staff members tomorrow that outlines all of this, so that everybody has it all in writing and can see what this looks like and what it doesn't look like. Our school counselors and our teachers are working with the students this week to prepare them for these changes. For every person there is in this school district, every person in this room, there's a spectrum of beliefs about what the right thing to do is for their own family. We, our job right now is to help everybody, regardless of where they are on the spectrum, understand how they make decisions for their own family and what that will look like in school. Meaning, if a student comes to school and they are wearing a mask, students who aren't are not going to ridicule them or make fun of them. And similarly, if a student, vice versa. Students are not going to be ridiculed or made fun of for their choice not to wear a mask. Either way, it's our job to make sure that we're setting the conditions this week, so that whatever decision people are making next week, they feel comfortable, they feel supported, and they feel safe. Our goal, as I said, our goal is to make the students feel comfortable. It's really important for parents to also spend time between now and next Monday helping their child with the situation. We're not going to be able to police individual parent decisions, meaning we're not going to be able to say to a seven-year-old, we think that your parent would have wanted you to wear a mask, or we think that your parent wouldn't have wanted you to wear a mask. That's between you as a parent and your child, and the children will make that decision when they come to school. Some of them may feel comfortable in certain situations, not other situations, whatever the case may be for them. So that's, so we'll be preparing students for that fact. If there is an issue between students or between a staff member and a student, then we would, you know, address that. We are not, this is, the policy is district-wide. It's not classroom by classroom. Masks are optional. That's a student-parent choice. We're not going to have different rules in different classrooms or anything like that. I think that's the, that's the gist of it. Like I said, the details will be, again, in tomorrow's letter home, so that everybody has it in front of them. And we can always answer questions at COVID nineteen at Warren TV. We got it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. Presentations, I'm showing none. Discussions, I don't have any. Moving to committee reports, any, let's start with Finance, Operations, and Security Committee. Mrs. Zahn, if you would.
Yes. Finance, Operations, and Security Committee met on February fifteenth. We went over a couple of miscellaneous items that had been carried forward, the first being a review of the usage of the Stop It app. The committee discussed the connection between the Stop It app and social media, work that's being done now at the, at the middle school. And the administration's going to investigate the potential of the app and whether it can be advantageous for a stronger push in connection with those other social media discussions that are taking place. We also took a look at the district-wide traffic control plan proposal, the strategic plan action, calls for review of all traffic flows, signage, and lot safety this year. The recommendation was to have a third party conduct the review and provide a written report. The committee discussed whether to conduct a comprehensive review of all facilities versus just the elementary schools where no work has been done so far. The committee discussed how to incorporate non-district opportunities, please, lots across from middle school, et cetera. The committee supports moving forward with that district-wide traffic control plan. We then revisited from the previous Finance Committee meeting, the discussion of a transportation procedure for multiple Warren households. The transportation coordinator and principals of one of the schools assisted in developing a procedure. The committee discussed the potential challenges that could arise if we moved forward with a transportation procedure for multiple households, the ability to pull back even in the future, slippery slope of additional requests, potentially need public review, et cetera. And the committee did not make a recommendation to support moving forward with that procedure. We had our next conversation about the budget. The most significant thing I think that happened there is that we recognized that we, our entire budget discussion has been delayed because of the state. The next board meeting, as a result, was moved off to the twenty-fourth of March, which would be after the State of State address and the state aid numbers being issued. The, there were a number of requests just for some formatting changes and additional information, and the information provided to the board, and you can see on the minutes what those changes looked like. And then it was just. And then it was just an update on the working group on food service that an initial meeting had taken place.
Thank you, Mrs. On. Next committee report is the ad hoc return to school committee.
I think it would address by the.
All right, public commentary. This is the first of two public comments. For tonight's session, this is for agenda items only. If participants could kindly state their name, address, group affiliation, if applicable, you'll have three minutes to share with the board your comments. Please direct all comments to myself. And the board would love to hear your feedback. This is for agenda items. We'll start in the room. Is there anyone in the room who has any comments they wish to make to the board? Yes, please. Would you like a microphone?
We need it for the Zoom call, otherwise people at home may not be able to hear.
Oh, I assure you, I'm here. The microphone, talk online, so it doesn't matter. Do masks work? Heather Silver, self-run Warren. Do masks work? If I asked a hundred people, I'd get a hundred different answers that run the gamut of misinformation, fear-mongering and simple cheating. Most of the roots of the realization of how much we didn't know in March of twenty twenty, how much we know now and how much everyone is making up or ignoring. One thing I can be sure of unequivocally, all one hundred should agree by now that masks cause more harm than good. If not, nothing will change their minds because our leaders have scared them into not thinking logically. You've preached for just shy of two years how tied your hands have been by our offer government inflicting their dictatorial mandates. And if you could do more, you definitely would. Well, it looks like you're all untied. So now what? I provided graphs and charts and facts, so I didn't have to waste my precious three minutes showing them. You can read them over and feel bad about your actions afterwards, but I will point out some facts for the public. As of two sixteen twenty-two, three hundred and seven children ages zero to four and six hundred and sixty-three children ages five to eight, or five to eighteen have died of the virus. However, of the roughly seventy-three million US children, fifty thousand total under the age of fourteen have died of all other causes since the pandemic began. Make that was clear. And up to fifty percent of children and young adults have COVID with little to no symptoms at all. So let's not forget. That's more than we could say about the flu, yet we have never been a masked culture for what, for that. And I'm not about to lay down and continue to accept these mandates any longer without standing up for what our kids deserve. You are elected to positions on this board to represent our community. This is not a platform for your own agenda. None of you is above answering to this town. For whatever reason, way too many people have accepted the complacency of your actions and feared questioning them, something I'll never get. Now that you have the opportunity to really show that it's all about the kids, let's see it. This is destroying them. And if standardized tests don't show that clear as day, then you're blind to. They are being failed because the biggest concern in any classroom is not comprehension, but whether a child's mask is properly covering their nose. It cannot continue. And for you to think this manufactured Cali color chart should determine anything about our child's future, then you are spitting in the masked faces of these children. Get over yourselves and get on with the business you're tasked with. Education, not masks, not CRT, not our governor, not whether teachers will quit if they're censored. Insanity has taken over and to be threatened any longer is cause for true action and should be taken if the sheer disregard for these kids continues. Today, tonight to disconnect this ridiculous chart with optional masking once and for all and remove these masks forever. And seeing it has been clearly proven in so many other districts around the country that it is not a federal mandate, masking should be optional on all buses as well and contact tracing to move to a less stringent approach, if at all. Our goal now should be conceiving of a plan that allows us to live with this endemic going forward, providing for the least interruptions to our children's future education. If Senator Durst's proposition of Bill S eleven oh six goes through, masking will never be up for debate again. And we can once again go back to serving our children properly. There is no day like today to do the right thing and I hope you do it.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. Are there any other comments in the room and then we will go to Zoom? Yes, please.
That's Stacy Sackett, Seven Trandy Place. I agree. I'd like also for the board to consider making a motion to remove the Cali score when discussing masks and the mandates with the kids. I think that we need to learn to live with this virus without the fear of looming restrictions or the return of masks. Many schools throughout our state, many states throughout the country and many other countries worldwide have already done this. Restrictions and vaccine mandates have been lifted and they are living life with COVID, not in constant fear of it. We need to return to operating under individual and parental choice, not under government rules and mandates. Masks and vaccines are available for anyone who want them. If we're arguing that masks work, then those individuals who choose to wear them are protected. We do not need to continue to mask healthy, mask the healthy or enforce strict social distancing in the APRs or throughout the schools. If you don't make changes now and you continue to allow masks and contact tracing, which it seems like we're addressing, to be tied to the Cali scores, then there will be no end to this. And the threat of our children being forced to wear masks again will continue to exist. Our children have been living their lives without restrictions outside of school for a very long time. We need the Board of Ed to return their school lives back to normal too. So I'd like you guys to consider please voting to make masks and contact tracing optional regardless of the Cali score.
Thank you, Mrs. Sackett. Any other comments from within the room? Seeing none, going to Zoom, Mr. Adam Silver. Do you kindly state your name and address?
Hi, Adam Silver.
Three minutes.
Adam Silver, thirty-five Quail Run in Warren. I'd like to reiterate what I just heard. I think the issue we're all grappling with is this reliance on Cali scores, which for those who, who don't know, were set up effectively to, to deal with a zero COVID policy. The, the low level would result in less than one case per day in, in a community of a hundred thousand people, which is almost unachievable for any length of time. So if you're going to continue to, to utilize these Cali scores, which by the way, the CDC has gotten rid of and has moved to a low, medium, high level that takes into account hospitalizations, takes into account the hospital capacity. We're just going to be putting our kids back in masks every year. It has to end. These masks are performative. We all know that cloth masks worn by kids don't really matter. We also know that everybody other than kids is doing whatever they want and including our kids outside of school without masks. They're going to bars, they're going to restaurants, they're going to sporting events, they're doing all sorts of things. And what I hear is, isn't this wonderful? We're going to make masks optional. But in the back of my mind, what I really hear is the day will come where we'll be outside of this low or moderate category and wham, we're going to put these kids back in masks. It's been proven Europe doesn't mask, mask their kids. Other parts of this country don't mask their kids. Wearing a cloth or even a surgical mask has minimal benefits, if any. And kids are the least, they're, they're the least vulnerable in this. So why are we punishing them the most? It's ridiculous. I'd like to also, you know, reiterate and say this to the president, Mr. Brzee. It's time to make this permanent. Time to not be relying on Cali scores. Cali scores, which are not being used in the vast majority of this country and are not even being used by the CDC anymore. This is like those days of, of the, the post nine eleven with all the different color coding terrorist threats. You remember those? I, I, I remember when we finally got rid of them. That was performative as well. So let's stop with the, isn't this wonderful? We're going to mask optional and make it really wonderful for our children. And really wonderful would be, we are getting rid of masks, period. If you would like to wear one, by all means, wear one. No one is going to make fun of you and no one is going to stop you from doing so. But I feel strongly, if we don't do this, this is an endemic virus. We will be living with this for the rest of our lives and many generations to come, if not for thousands of years. And if that's the case, the way this is set up is every December, January. You will be putting kids back in masks. Don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. Nancy Andrews, I believe I saw her hand up. Please go ahead.
Hi, Nancy Andrews. I am the reach teacher at ALT School and Woodland School and the proud president of the Warren Township Education Association. I wanted to first start off by congratulating Will and Senora Rabimbas for participating in such a heartwarming endeavor. That was truly an example of how our members support students and help create really valuable learning experiences. And I also wanted to take this time to say congratulations to Mary Balcones, Susan Leonard and Lori Donovan as they embark on their next adventures in retirement. They will be sorely missed and, but we do appreciate all they have done for our students and our community here. Our district though, like all, like, excuse me, our district, like all schools across the country have been put to the test throughout the last few years. While people may not agree with every decision that our district has made during that time, there is one thing that we can all agree on. Working together truly yields the best outcomes. Since the onset of the pandemic and even a little before that, our district formed a committee which was comprised of many varied educational professionals. The committee expanded and then additional subcommittees were formed. These committees met regularly, spending hours together, working on making the best and safest decisions for all of those involved. No decision was ever made in haste. Tireless time was spent reading articles from reputable sources, discussing pros and cons, asking questions, raising concerns, and then ultimately voting on we, how we as a district should move forward. While our opinions regarding certain topics may have differed, the members of these committees were consummate professionals. The goal was and continues to be, what is the best course of action for the students of Warren? This process has been crucial to our success throughout the pandemic. Warren has proven the success of this process since we were one of the districts that were able to keep the most amount of students physically in school, while several surrounding schools stayed hybrid for longer and then in more recent months had to close due to outbreaks. Voting to change our mask procedures after the committee agreed for the current guidance to remain negates all of the work that our district has worked together to do. This isn't about masks. This is about respecting the process that had allowed our Warren schools to be one of the most successful districts in the county during a global pandemic. Thank you for continuing to respect and honor this process.
Thank you, Mrs. Andrews. Linda Draper. Please go ahead.
Hi, Linda Draper, seventy-eight Briarwood Drive East, Warren. Can you guys hear me? I just wanted to say ditto to what the Silver said and also Stacy. I'm a little disappointed that we are at this point, not at mask optional, no matter what the metrics may be. So just wanted to know that, that, that's how I felt about that. And regarding the Cali metrics, are we moving to the new metrics? Not that I think they mean anything, but are we moving to the new metrics that the CDC put out? Or are we sticking with the July twenty twenty-one numbers? And also wanted to know about any lunch restrictions that may still be going on? Are the kids going to be normal now? Or are they still going to be four to a table? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Draper. Any other comments on Zoom? If you kindly use the raise your hand feature, if there's any in the room, please feel free to raise your hand here as well. Mrs. Silver, please.
Heather Silver, Quail Run. Schools are the only places that are still heavily restricted, yet only in so few states. I didn't think Warren was a place where people went for control, but COVID has shown me I'm wrong. Just down two oh two in Pennsylvania, those kids must be super immune because they got rid of masks ages ago. The high school is super excited to see smiling faces on March seventh. Also, no Cali scale stipulations there though. How sad will that be when Woodland is running around in masks right next door to them? The least vulnerable group of people in the world still in masks. When was the last time you were required to wear a mask in any other public setting, including our own government buildings? Why has everyone else made mask optional even after it's been proven and even spoken by our own administration that schools have been found to be the safest places anywhere since this began? If we really want to follow the science, unmask them. How long must we fight? How long must we all have anger and hatred running through our veins with each day we wake up to no change, goalposts being moved again? Isn't everyone tired? Because I certainly know I am. People have been given every opportunity and all the information they need to make their own informed decisions. It's time we all stop being tortured to accommodate anyone else. Vaccinated or not, everyone can get COVID, period. It should be your own choice how to move forward, not a school board or a governor or any of the myriad groups that have been so wrong so many times so far. Masking is for your own protection, not the protection of others, and that is now proven. So if mask, if you'd like, but unmask our kids and stop indoctrinating them into believing that they, that being unmasked is a death sentence. The longer this goes on, the worse it will get. The Associated Press and the New York Times have come out acknowledging that the Cali scales need to change its criteria, or it is literally impossible to come out of this. If it were used for flu, strep, or even the common cold, we would never go back to school and our country would crumble. How have you not wanted to fight back for the freedoms our country is supposed to allow? That it was founded on and that it is revered for around the globe. The pie chart I provided earlier illustrates the following in case that you didn't see it. As of one twenty-one twenty-two, children ages five to seven that died in New Jersey in the timeframe indicated did so as follow. Eleven from drowning, fourteen heart disease, sixteen drugs, forty-two suicide, forty-nine cancer, fifty-nine homicide, sixty-eight listed as other. But you know what COVID was? Two. Yet it remains the most restrictive thing to come about in my lifetime. How is this allowed? It's no mystery anymore. We know what works, how it works and why it works. So we need to move on. We are approaching the start of the third year of this. Your focus should be making our children's learning experience the most efficient and productive possible. And a motion to remove this connection between the Cali chart and masking is the best first start. In combination with that, we must make masking optional on buses and contact tracing, which I see we're doing, to be limited to the least intrusive. Too much time has been spent on this with no progress. You can't blame the government anymore. Now it just rests in your hands. We have forwarded a multitude of articles and letters from other districts proclaiming their independence. Why do you refuse to join that never-ending list? Why is it always wait and see? Stand up and fight for our kids because we've been trying for years.
Thank you, Mrs. Silver. We're at the fifteen-minute mark. Is there, just give us one second. Their motion to extend public commentary.
Motion.
Second. All in favor? Close, sentence. If, actually, yeah, you're here. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get the order in my head, so.
Nikki Dalton, twelve Westwood Court. I just would like to say that I also would ask that you would not have masking tied in with the Cali score. And I just had a question regarding lunch. Also, will parents still be required to provide a negative test or proof of vaccination to come in and volunteer?
Thank you. Would you mind handing the?
Hello, my name is Karina, eleven Old Ford Drive. I'm a mom of two children. Abad. And I would like to commend the speaker before us for having such courage to do so. It's difficult for me and I think for other parents to voice how they feel. I share the same sentiments that have been expressed with removing Cali scores, especially at this point where we are. As we know, data published by the CDC has shown that collectively children die from car accidents, suicide, drug and alcohol overdose, drowning, cancer and flu, more than COVID. The director of the CDC, Rochelle Valensky, has stated publicly that COVID vaccines do not prevent transmission. The question is, why are we still discussing this? And I think simply it's because adults are very afraid. I think the question we should be asking ourselves is how is distancing, mask-wearing, hyper-sanitizing affecting our children and youth? As parents, are we wallowing in our own anxiety at our children's expense? We have accepted the notion of masking our children and distancing them while we, the adults, enjoy largely a completely normal lifestyle, visiting restaurants, music venues, vacation spots, sport complex, as well. Our children have been swimming for two years in a toxic. while our children have been swimming for two years in a toxic, stressful, irrational, dysfunctional, and disconnected environment, exposing them to consequences not yet known. I have many questions as a mom, as what their effects will be to their lung development when they're older, damage to them by being exposed to the polyurethane that is treated on these masks, Lysol and Clorox, that all come with warning labels for the dangers of inhalation, harms of ethanol-based sanitizers, and so on and so on. I think subjecting them to these measures that do little to protect them. And instead, we've created a new subset of emotional and mental issues now. Many children fearing what is a normal life of interactions, missing vital human connection in facial expressions and sensory benefits of other children's colds and viruses and real-life experience. Children extremely uncomfortable now in social settings and within close contact of their peers, of others. Children afraid to do the wrong thing and be called out for not wearing their mask right in school, ignoring the fact that they've been breathing into a wet and dirty mask all day long. They're missing a vital human connection found in facial expressions. And from distancing and isolation, they're missing the reciprocity and the sensory benefits of other beautiful children. I ask you again not to take this lightly. Please, if you can, remove the Cali scores from any masking in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Philip Jones, I believe you had your hand up. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name is Philip Jones. I'm a teacher at Mount Harb School. The 2021 Mount Harb Governor's Educator of the Year and the proud vice president of the Warren Township Education Association. I would just like to encourage the board in any future decisions to not make decisions that cannot be undone and to not make decisions about the future without the information that may come in the future. As of now, the situation allows for changes to protocols based on the situation in our district and in our area. And those decisions are based on consensus among many, many individuals, as they always have been. And they have kept our schools very safe. And, and I can say, over the last two years, I have seen a very happy group of students. Despite the situation, obviously, things were a challenge. But our students have, have really performed very highly, as have the staff. And I think that we need to keep our options open because we don't know what's coming in the future. So to make a decision about what may happen six months or a year from now, I think is unwise because we don't know what the future holds for us. And anything less seems to me like we're using the children and, and the staff as political football, and that seems very unfortunate to me. So I hope the board will consider that in their decisions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Are there any other comments? Miss Sack, please.
Stacy Sackett, 720 Place. I don't think making any changes tying masks to the Cali score negates any work that the Return to School Committee has done in the past. And I also don't think it's putting anyone in jeopardy going forward. No one's saying take masks away. We're just saying, make it optional. Let parents make the decisions for our kids. I don't want to have this discussion in five months, six months, and have to tell my kid, "Sorry, masks are going back on." That's going to be hell for, for kids. It's going to be hell for parents. I want to be able to make the choice for my own kid. I'm tired of having other people make the decisions for me. It's my kid. I know what's best for him. So no one is saying, "Remove them," or "Remove your ability to mask," or "Mask your own kid." Just give us the option of making our decision for ourselves. That's it.
Thank you, Miss Sack. Are there any additional members of the public who wish to provide a comment online, in Zoom? In the room?
Smoke signals.
Seeing none, is there a motion to close public commentary?
Motion.
All in favor? Close, extensions. Public commentary is closed. I do see a hand. We will have a second round of public commentary after the items for board consideration. So we will get to that. Before we get to items for board consideration, are there any additional?
Sure. So, and the only comment I have on the agenda is actually partially an answer to a question that was brought up as well. The agenda one is in new business. You'll see that added was a discussion about the metrics, Cali versus CDC and others, based on the fact that the CDC provided a different metric on Friday. We have, in the past, looked, the CDC had a previous metric as well. If we had been following that metric all along, it would have been much stricter, actually, by that, by that definition. We want to see how this metric plays out over the next few weeks before, since it was only announced on Friday, to make sure that it doesn't inadvertently do something that we don't want it to do. So the intention of it on the agenda is for the board to discuss that. But from the Return to School Committee perspective, leadership, we met over the weekend and today to kind of review it, is we should see them in parallel for the next few weeks and find out what that's going to do. I think from the Return to School Committee perspective, we all agree that we don't, that we're all hoping that this is not something that even still needs to be a conversation next winter, which is when we would expect there to be an impact if things went back to orange and red. The goal is, for right now, for the rest of this school year, what is a plan that has been vetted and reviewed, is in alignment with the guidance, that makes sense. So we may move to different metrics. We, you know, all those things that are open for the board discussed on the agenda tonight so that they can do that in new business. Some of the specific questions that came up, I don't know the answer about the parent negative test vaccination. That's something we're trying to get the answer to. The, we worked, we had a meeting on Friday with the state officials on this. There are certain, although it doesn't make sense to me right now, there are certain executive orders that don't expire on Monday. And one of them is that our staff members are required to be vaccinated and that executive order, or to have a negative test. And that executive order is the same one that put in the requirement for volunteers. So we're, we're hoping to get clarification, but as of right now, that doesn't appear to expire on Monday. And as far as lunches go, we actually talked about that at leadership today. In some places, we've already started consolidating lunches again. That will continue to happen. It'll go slow as, and each building, they're looking at that as we speak. We want to see what the impact is on the next 10 days. If people who feel that masks were not a factor in keeping kids from transmitting COVID for the last year and a half are right, then our numbers won't go up over the next few weeks when masks come off, and we'll be able to make additional changes. You know, we come back together in two weeks. If we see numbers go up, because now all of a sudden, there's more close contacts and people don't have masks on, then that'll be information that we can have. But so the lunchroom question is an active one and one that we're hoping to. So I think the comment was like, back to normal. We don't know exactly what that means anymore. We don't know how kids are going to react. They're going to be, as people have mentioned, on all different places. And so we want to get through the first week. We have another board meeting after one week of the mask being optional. So it'll be a good time. I don't think I have anything else.
Just clarification. So next Monday during lunch, how will that, do we know how that will look different? Will they, will there be more kids at the table?
So there's no changes for next Monday at lunch. There are already places where we've consolidated down. So that varies by school, based on the space available. So we're not making a change to next week based on this.
Okay. But as of now, the rest of the school day.
Right, lunches.
Trending towards mask option.
Yeah, I mean, the lunch is the one place where they're already on, because they're eating, obviously. But yeah, everything, thanks to the CDC rule being removed, from pickup to drop-off, mask is optional.
Thank you. Items for board consideration in action. Are there any items any board member wishes to pull for a separate vote? Or, and/or discuss further? This is on, please.
I just have a comment. I'd like to draw attention to item B5, where we are voting to accept the audit for the 2020-2021 school year. And that is an audit that has zero recommendations and zero corrective action, which is as good as it gets for an audit. I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to that.
Any of the board members have any items they wish to discuss further, comment on, pull for separate vote, or any actions taken? Seeing none?
All right. Motion to approve items for board consideration, A1 through A2, B1 through B10, C1 through C9, and D1.
Second.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Croson?
Yes.
Mr. DeSey?
Yes.
Mr. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on?
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
Motion's passed 9-0. About 100 years, just. Unfinished business, I have none. Moving on to new business, there was a request prior to this meeting for norms to add the future use of Cali and CDC metrics as a new business item for discussion. So I will, I will certainly open the floor to, to begin that discussion and obtain any options. I'd love to hear what the board has to say regarding this topic.
So, yes, I don't know if that was an entree for me or not.
I'm looking at you, so.
I will take it. So I, I feel compelled to speak. I don't have anything formal prepared. I have some chicken scratch notes here I've been, I've been writing. But I think that a lot has changed, as we're all aware, from July last year when we voted to date, good, bad, and otherwise. And to me, I wrote down two key words that I think are at the crux of what we're all wrestling with, and it's choice and decision. And where does that choice and decision reside? Does it reside with the parents and the students? Or does it reside with the powers that be, whomever that may be, right? Whether it's the board, the state, et cetera. And I think that when we look at the changes, and these have been documented, the CDC has changed the way they look at this. The metric is no longer cases. It's severe illness and hospitalizations. And I think if the metric continues to be cases, we will be in a perpetual mask/winter spike of this disease. And we need to ask ourselves, is that what we want for the foreseeable future? And that's a rhetorical question. I'm not asking anybody to respond right now. I think the other reality is that whether you're vaccinated or not, that vaccine is now readily available for those that want it. We've likely plateaued. I don't see that number seismically changing over time. And I think there's been fantastic medicinal advances in terms of antivirals being available. Granted, not for the balls of our children 12 and under in the district, but God forbid you have COVID and it's severe. So I'm torn, right? Because I absolutely 100% believe in a data-driven decision, and I think that the data is very useful for the way that we make decisions. However, I come back to the same word, which is decision. And where does that decision reside? So I think we, we really need to come back to where the choice and decision is made. Are we okay with the board saying that the decision is this hard and fast? And if it returns in the winter, then the masks are back on? Or are we okay with parents and children making the best educated decision they have, using the same data-driven approach, as to whether those masks come back or not? And so I really have no idea where this soliloquy would end up when I gave it, whether it's a motion or not. But I think that those are very important inflection points that we all have to seriously consider as we move forward. And so I'll leave it at that. Whether folks want to comment or not, you know, feel free. I know that this is likely not prepared nor shared with a lot of you, so it's a bit of a surprise. But I think it was very important for me personally to bring those points forward during this session so that we can ask ourselves those questions and figure out what the path forward is.
Mr. Weinstein, appreciate that. Sure.
Mr. Croson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Weinstein. I appreciate your, your comments. And thank you to the members of the public that did speak out. We truly appreciate your perspective and your input, especially because it's not always easy to speak in a public meeting. So we do appreciate that. To build on what you said, the, the concept of choice in the district, especially when considering the rest of the state, weighs heavily on my mind. If a month from now, the Cali score were to go back up to orange, we would be voluntarily returning ourselves to a situation in which we are mandating that students and staff be masked in our schools when, in every other sector in the state, that's not the case, even during Omicron, right? The height of transmission, not necessarily hospital capacity, but the height of transmission. We said kids have to be masked in school. But after school, they can go to Dave and Buster's, and they can go to their friend's house, and they can play sports, and they can go to restaurants, and they can go to Dunkin' Donuts, and they can go anywhere they want and not have to wear a mask. That defies common sense. And I believe it is up to us as a governing body to show the public, that public officials are still capable of common sense. I respect and appreciate the work of the Return to School Committee, and I respect and appreciate their recommendations. But continuing to rely on a plan that was created in July of 2021, before vaccines were available for students, and now in the face of changing guidelines from different health organizations, the CDC saying one thing and the NJDOH saying another, we should not be putting ourselves in a situation where we need to mitigate between two different health agencies. The information is available for the public. It's available for parents to make that decision, that choice for themselves, and for their students. And so I also was not sure where this soliloquy would end, but I would make a motion to revise the return to school plan to make masks optional regardless of level.
Appreciate that. So just, just a, so let's have a discussion. So thank you for that, Mr. Croson. So regarding the, I might have missed the, the color you referred to. I don't know, so I'm going to ask a question blindly. Is our data for the Cali, is that state-driven or is that regional?
So, so the Cali score is a New Jersey-only system. It's not in any, it's not in other states. It wasn't in the CDC. The Cali score is the New Jersey's way of identifying risk for communicable diseases. They publish this for the flu as well as for COVID. It's been published for the flu as long as I know of. I don't know. They have a different color set, scale there. The way we've used it is the regional score. So that is Somerset, Hunterdon, and Mercer Counties. One of the things we did over the last two weeks was try to analyze, you know, is that a good metric or are there better ones? We found that the connection between the Cali score and our case experience is almost one-to-one. Meaning when, when the Cali score goes up, our cases are up. When the Cali score goes down, our cases are down. But it is not a Warren-specific score. We did, actually, last summer, when we were having this conversation about how do we, how do we have a predictable way to know when things should go on or off? We did talk about using a Warren-specific indicator instead of the regional one or the Somerset County one. But in both of those cases, we found the mask would have been on more than less. And so we didn't go with that. Again, we've never actually put it into place because we have a handful of freedom to do so. There. And, you know, the only, the, the one, one of the concerns that led to the recommendation remaining status quo is not knowing what the impact will be over the next few weeks and waiting to have more information about that. And second, the other districts that have mentioned not tying it to a Cali score, which is most, have generally said something like, if the cases go up, we will reconsider putting, requiring masks. And what I'm, what I would recommend avoiding is having a debate about masks every time there's a lot of cases or not a lot of cases. So there's a philosophical question for the board to wrestle with and make a decision about, about whether it's ever or never. That's different than what most districts have announced, which is their superintendent will just make a decision, which is not what anybody wants, including me, as far as how we make these decisions going forward. So I'd like to share that.
Yeah, I, I think, to me, and that's fair, right? I think we all want to make a decision that is able to stand the test of time and what occurs down the road. I come back to the metric, right? So the metric right now is cases. We have not graduated from that metric in two years. The CDC has graduated from that metric. Vaccines are available. And so is, is medicine. Granted, again, 12 and under, no. So I think we need to ask ourselves, is the metric that we're going to continue to follow cases? And if it is, I don't see an end in. And if it is, I don't see an end in sight, because these, these cases will never, ever, ever go away. They just won't. So if we're not willing to change the metric, then this is a moot point. If we are willing to change the metric, then I believe we can move forward. And that comes back to the way that the data is crafted, the way that the metric, whatever that metric may be, is calculated, and then that drives decision-making. So I still think it's a data-driven decision, but I think if we have, obviously I'm biased and you can tell, a flawed metric that's being used to drive decisions, I think that that, that puts us in the situation that we will be in perpetually, which is remasking and remasking as the, the spike surges. My two cents.
So I think we have, I want to, I want to make sure we're not conflating two things, right? So there's, do we have a metric, and is that metric the right one?
Sure.
Right? Or do we not have a metric at all? And I think, and I agree with you, Todd, I mean, I think that the Cali score is, Dr. Mingle, last board meeting, you said we need an approach that's predictable and flexible. People want to know what to expect. We don't want you to feel like, I, I don't know, should we go back to, should we, what, we want that to be predictable, and we want it to be flexible. And I, I have thought for a few weeks now that the Cali score is implicitly inflexible, right? It hasn't been updated, this is what the reality, right? So I think with the CDC at what, five o'clock on a Friday, came out with a great timing. So, so that's, that's new information, right? And I think what we've proven is that we have been, as things have evolved, stayed on top of it. So I think I, for one, if we're saying we're living with this as an endemic, that means you're not pretending it doesn't exist. That means you have to have a metric at least through the end of this school year, right? We don't know what next year is going to look like, but at least through June. So what is that metric? I agree with you, Todd. Mr. Weinstein, sorry, I know Todd as well. I, I think that the, the Cali score metric is, is implicitly outdated, but I think, Dr. Mingle, what you were alluding to over the next couple of weeks, there's a, there's, there's, this is the first time, I have a first grader, it's the first time she has gone to school without a mask, right? We have no, and she is not wearing that mask, trust me, okay? She is not, and I, I have told her, I want you to realize that everybody's going to have a mix of emotions, and you need to be supportive of everybody, right? And so I'm very excited for her. I'm glad that she's going to have that experience, and there's going to be a range of kids who are wearing it, not wearing it. We don't know what that looks like, right? I think the case rates are low if you go by the Cali score, right? So I mean, is it likely you'd go back to orange or red in the next three months? Probably not, right? But I don't, I, I would love the, the ability to be able to be flexible over the next few weeks and go, okay, so do the, if we go by the CDC, where does that put us? If we go by Cali, what does that put us? And I would, I would err on the side of actually a little, being a little bit more liberal with it, right? So we know that, to everybody's point, that this doesn't affect kids as severely as it does adults. We are in a very different situation than we were two years ago. But I, I maintain we still need a metric. We still need something. We're still living with this thing. We don't want to know what it's going to look like over the next, you know, few months, once the masks come off. So let's have full transparency in what we're seeing. Look at the Cali score rating, look at our cases in the, you know, in the schools, and then look at what the, um, the CDC metric is and just sort of kind of make a determination then. But I would, I would definitely not remove the metric for the, by the end of this year.
Thank you, Ms. Keller. Could I, could I just go, just? I'll get back to you. Go ahead. This is my own up here. Could you just restate what the motion was? Because we're discussing this, I just want to get clear.
Sure. The motion would be to make masks optional regardless of the Cali score.
So clarification, no metric. I'm, I'm trying to tie it to what Ms. Keller was referring to, I'm sorry.
So what I wrote initially, I wrote, um, Mr. Croson moved to remove metrics from the mask policy at Warren Township Schools. Is that okay? Or you want me to restate it in a different way?
Can, can you just restate that, please?
Sure. What I, what I wrote from Mr. Croson's motion 15 minutes ago was, um, Mr. Croson moved to remove metrics from it, from the mask policy at Warren Township Schools.
Okay, thank you.
Which would in essence make them optional at all levels.
Right, because I think, I think we're saying two different things, and I just want to make sure I clarify it. If folks hear it differently, you let me know. We're either, we're saying remove the metric or metrics entirely and make the choice slash decision up to the parent slash kid. The other thing I'm hearing is remove the Cali metric, but reintroduce and replace it with another metric that governs whether those masks come back or not.
Yes, and the form of my motion was to.
Got it, okay.
Which, to, to your point, Ms. Keller, I, I, I don't philosophically, I don't mind having metrics, but I think it becomes a little bit silly when we are engaging in the discussion about metrics with masking for the rest of the state law. And so if the, the governor and the state legislator and county councils all throughout the state of New Jersey, and now the majority of school districts all throughout the state of New Jersey, are saying that regardless of what may come, removing this to an individual choice, at what point does it defy common sense that we are still tying it when our, when our students and our staff can go about the rest of their lives without masks? At, at that point, I think it begins to erode the public trust in our ability to make common sense decisions, which is why I get the motion that I did.
Just to clarify, Dr. Mingle, what you were saying was that these districts might be saying that this is what they're doing, but really what they're saying is, we'll make, they're, they're not necessarily saying permanently masks are optional, and nowhere down the line will we ever say that you have to go. They are saying, and if conditions change, we may have to revisit that.
There are all different approaches. So there are districts that have said, uh, what is the, the wording of this motion essentially, which is masks are optional no matter what. There are other districts that have said, that have never passed a policy on masks. They just said, we'll make adjustments as time goes on. And there are districts, there's actually other districts using the Cali metrics. Some of them say it, they're only on in green, uh, sorry, they're only off in green. And there's some districts that have kept them on, so it's the whole gamut.
Right.
Yeah, I don't, so, um, I don't want to speak for any specific district. It's the whole guy, yeah. I just wanted to mention one thing. This is one of the things we haven't analyzed about the options and metrics, because one of the question, we did ask the question of, uh, what are the, what's the consensus about all these things? But also what metrics would be the best ones? Because every public health organization and medical group says there should be a metric. The AAP, CHOP, Harvard Medical Center, all these groups say, when cases are high, masks should stay on for students. What, um, we, what we were looking for was what metrics do they recommend, and that's where there's not consensus. So that's why we didn't recommend a change. The CDC metric has a twenty-eight page explanation for its metric. Um, and I haven't dug into all of it, but their metric uses cases to decide which of two things defines what your color. So even theirs has like this bar of entry before they get to the hospitalizations and all that. So I don't want to, like, on the, on the fly, change to a different metric. If, if the decision is to have no metric, that's one thing. If we want to change to a different metric, we have to do our due diligence and figure out what it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think you hit your point, Dr. Mingle. The fact that there's a lot of consistency among those among those bodies strengthens my argument that this should be an individual decision. We're not public health experts here. To my knowledge, none of us are doctors. Some of us may be scientists, I'm not sure. But regardless, we, we shouldn't be putting ourselves in such a, the situation where we're mitigating between these various public health agencies. We're going on two full years in this, three different school years in this. Individuals can make the choice for themselves and for their students about which health guidelines based upon their individual risk level and their individual comfort about whether or not to wear a mask in school, just like we do in every other part of our state at this point.
So just for clarification, make sure I'm still caught up. Regardless of this motion passing or failing, that's not going to change on March seventh. It may. It may. We, if we decide to go without metrics from this point forward. And the metrics go up. And the metrics go up, then they're saying masks optional, because this would be.
Because in theory, our Cali score, I mean, not that it most likely would not, in theory, our Cali scores could shoot right up to orange for, for March seventh. And then we'd be in a situation where now students don't have to wear them on a bus, but they do once again. So it, it, I think even just saying that, again, behooves us to, to move to make them optional.
Just to follow up on Ms. Keller's point, if we do decide to just throw away with these metrics and, 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 you know, vote for the motion you just put forth, we could, at the next board meeting, vote to remask again. So I think you said, Ms. Keller, like forevermore, we're never going to mask. That's not necessarily the case, right? If things get bad, we have better metrics at the next board meeting, we can vote to remask. And if I did vote for your, the, the motion on the table, I might vote to remask again, depending on where we find ourselves. You know, or the kids are getting bullied for wearing masks, right? So if we removed masks right now, that doesn't preclude us from when new information becomes available to us in future board meetings. We could vote to remask. It's not, this is not a once and done. We could
Yeah.
Vote to unmask at this board meeting, and then at a future board meeting, vote to mask again with new information available. I do think that it's prudent to have a plan in place, though I hear what you're saying. I think, uh, better organizations have a path ahead of them, and if we have to wait every board meeting to mask or remask, you're not really giving everybody a lot of lead time or, or insight into the road ahead. So I do see the benefit of at least having people be aware of, oh, you may have to remask if the Cali score goes up. So I'm kind of on the fence on that one.
Yeah, that's, I hear you. I wouldn't, I would, I don't want agenda, I'd be on every board meeting to be masked or unmasked. No, thanks. I guess what you're getting at is kind of the predictability of
Yeah.
Is, is there something that looks like we may have it or may not, kind of knowing that ahead of time versus a board arbitrarily saying, put them on, take them off?
Asking Dr. Mingle.
Right.
For every board meeting.
It's the
What do you think? Yeah.
It's the new snow day where, you know, you can't make a right decision. It's icy at my house, well, not at my house.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I, I, I think that, that Mr. Bishi brings up a valid point, right? So, and correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not on the committee, but the, the genesis and the birth of the ad hoc back-to-school committee is to have flexibility and ability to make decisions as new data and new COVID things come up. Otherwise, ad hoc would be, that term would be rendered incorrect for the, the committee. I, I think what I would also say, though, is we do know the predictability, right? It's been two years. It spikes in the winter. The masks have come back. It, it is predictable, right? We, we know that. So, look, we, we've all joined the board, as, as our council said, not for the money, but because we're willing to put in the time, the effort, and, and what's needed to make decisions in perhaps an ad hoc environment. But I would argue it's not ad hoc. It comes every winter. If we use this, this continued metric, the masks will be back in the winter. It's unavoidable. The data shows us that. So if we're following the data that is predictable the past two years, that's what's going to happen. So I, I think where I'm going with this is, I come back to choice, I come back to decision, and I come back to what is the metric we are going to use? And, and these are rhetorical questions. I know I'm getting passionate about it. I'm not trying to box people into a corner to make a decision right now. But we've seen this play out over two years. It hasn't changed in the wintertime. And we saw it play out in the winter of this year when vaccines were readily, readily available. So again, I, I think we've, we've got to look at who are we allowing to make choice and decision? Is there a metric we're going to use or not? And then let's, let's put the, the, and I'm not calling out the members of the ad hoc committee to, to task, but you're a member of that committee, it's ad hoc in nature, have the ability to be flexible and make decisions that you will bring back to this board to be able to vote on. I think that's the, the beauty of that committee. If it's changing and it's fluid, yes. You're going to bring us something, hopefully, that we can vote on, and we'll, we'll make that decision at that time. Hopefully, it's not every week, every month, or whatever it is. But to me, that committee would not have been created had it not been for the fluid nature of COVID. Thank you.
That's okay. Now, I know everybody had things to say. That's all right. I'm, I'm here. So, uh, gather my thoughts real quick now, thinking about everything else. So real quick, and, and Mr. Coson highlighted, and also, we're not medical professionals, even though I tell people I am. I just drive the ambulance, okay? So we're not in a position to make health decisions on our constituents. That's my opinion on that. I think, as the guests have said, it's, it's on the family to make that decision. I think our job is to review metrics, review case data, things like that, as it comes out, and make a decision as best as we can. But as we saw in years past, when the cases get high enough and severe enough, the state steps in and does it for us. The state, you know, the Department of Health, the CDC, the higher authorities will tell us when we need to mask, when we need to go virtual. They, they tell us, and it comes from the top. Governor Murphy, like you said, had our hands were tied. And, and if they untie our hands on the state government, then that's it. That, that should be, that should be a true mask optional at that point. Real quick, talking about hospitals and metrics and things like that, New Jersey's unique. If you call 911 and say, I have an eyelash in my eye, I want to go to the hospital. I have to take you to the hospital. I can't tell you no. And when COVID first started, I was scared. I thought it was the new Ebola. I ended up getting it, and thankfully I didn't have a very, a bad illness, but people were calling the ambulance every minute of every day. I've never been busier in my entire life than that, that couple of months back in twenty twenty. I've been done, I've been on an ambulance for fifteen years. Since that first wave, summer of twenty, it exponentially dropped off, and knock on wood, I have not seen, heard, known a colleague that's taken one, seen one myself, a very, very sick COVID patient in probably eight months. People are still going to the hospital? Absolutely. Someone gets a cough, they're so scared for media and everything going on that they think they have COVID, I have to take them to the hospital. They get observed, they spend at least a couple of hours, if not more like a day now in the hospital. So even, this is about metrics, even going to look at hospitalization metrics, there's going to be skewed numbers in that, because one hospital's going to say, oh, we have, these patients are admitted versus these patients are being observed versus these patients are in ICU or step-down ICU. So there's going to be so many variables, even looking at hospitalization metrics. I don't think it's going to be viable for us in our setting and our board. I think we should, you know, do, let the state do what they do and tell us when it's time to mask, or tell us when it's time to do homeschooling. And let us worry about the education of the kids and not be the medical experts that we think we are in telling us when we should mask and when we shouldn't mask. That's my two cents. I think, I thank you for bringing up that.
Thank you, doctor. Do we have any? Does this microphone?
I don't know. I can mute.
I've got two monitors to me.
On five G. Are there any additional, so we have a motion on the floor. The motion has been seconded. Uh, a, a good discussion, which I appreciated. Were there any additional? Repeat. I was getting there. I wanted to. Oh, sorry. I intended to repeat it before the vote. I paraphrased Mr. Croson. I hopefully did it correctly. Motion to remove metrics from the mask policy at Warren Township Schools, seconded by Mr. DeSey.
You want to amend that to say, for the indefinite future?
It's your motion. It should say what you want to say, not what I, what I said.
I'm afraid I did not hear your re.
Okay.
Could you just repeat?
I'll do this as loudly as I can. Motion to remove metrics from the mask policy at Warren Township Schools. Should I say unmake masks optional? Is that? Okay, how's that?
From this point forward.
A dumb clarification. Make a difference. References are not a policy.
I think that, is that implied, though, that it's our match? Like?
I think it is.
Okay.
I, I don't have a problem. I just want to, just for clarity. I can get, I can get rid of the words at Warren Township Schools. No, no, it just references a policy, so I worry, I worry about that we're tying a motion to a specific policy.
No, it's the Return to School Plan, that, which doesn't, Dr. Mingle, correct me if I'm wrong, that's not an actual policy. That's, that's an implementation point. Yes, great point, yes. Correct. So it's to make masks optional.
So this is
In the Return to School Plan.
I'm going to use my words, and this isn't for the motion. This is amending the July twenty twenty-one Return to School.
Yes, sir.
Guidance. Plan, plan. On the same page. This is why I wanted to keep this simple.
Yes.
The plan.
If, what I'm also hearing is that
If, what I'm also hearing is that, from a few of you, that it's okay then in a future board meeting, we make a determination, we need to go back to masks. That's what I'm hearing a couple of people say. So what's the difference between then the plan where we actually have our transparent about what that metric, like having a metric when, you know what I mean, being transparent about what that is? Like, how, if we're saying that we're going to make it optional, starting May, March 7th, for the foreseeable future, but we could also back that up and say, nope, actually, now we're in a situation where we feel like we have to make it mandatory. How is that different than having a metric that people can plan around and that they have? Yeah, I guess that's what I'm not quite understanding.
I think it should be taken out of our hands, we should let the state tell us when it's time to do it, they're the professionals, not us.
The state, meaning the governor?
Yeah. If there's another statewide mask mandate, clearly the situation's bad enough that we would.
That they were on fire, that the governor could do such a thing and, and tell us how local schools.
That is, that is gubernatorial control though in the state. Beyond our reach at that point.
I agree, I don't want to get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just.
But let them do the work for us, they're the ones that have the studies, they're the ones doing the metrics, they're the ones that have the State Department of Health, the State Department of Education. They have all the data, they're the, the, you know, field sub, the, the subject matter experts in that opinion. Why put that burden on us when they can tell us when it's time to mask, when it's time that's, when it's safe to not mask and let people have the option again to mask on the families? undue stress to have. We should not be the stumbling block. The way, yeah, these options as they come month to month potentially, let the state tell us when it's time.
I'm going to play double up, I'll, I'll take the bait. I think the, the, the risk with that is, so then there's high case amounts in Trenton, and the entire state has to mask up. Meanwhile, we, presumably, because this has happened in the past, like when it first got mandated, are doing fine.
Yeah, but if the governor says it's statewide, it's. Right, regardless of what we do here tonight, that's not a decision we can control. Our, our only decision is what.
Totally, I understand.
We're going to do, yeah.
We've just heard very strong voices from the public about how is the governor controlling the kids in Warren Township Schools?
Yeah.
How dare he? How could he do that? Now this board is saying, let the governor control, control if the kids are masked, is that what I'm hearing?
It's like that regardless, yes. Right, I mean, if he came back tomorrow. Yeah, I mean, we don't have that stance, even if we could vote 10 policies out tonight and.
I understand that, I, I, I very much understand that, yeah.
Unfortunately, that is out of our control, yeah.
I, I get it, I'm just, I want to be clear about what we're, what we're advocating.
Absolutely.
Okay.
I think it's the inverse of that, though. I think the, it, it would be where Warren is going through a real hotspot, and we're up in, I don't know, what's the highest, red? And the rest of the state's okay. That's where I think we would have to spring into action and say, no, we, because it's so localized, and we've got such an issue in Warren, we have to vote to mask, because the governor is not really concerned, because it's only localized. I think it's.
Yeah, I think we still have the ability to do so.
And we could do that. And the only problem is, we're a week behind, I think, because I think our board meetings are two weeks in between. And I think as the July policy was, you'd implement the next Monday, once we hit that high Cali score. So I think we'd be at most of a week behind in having to implement that and voting that at the board meeting.
Sure. But an individual could in real time make that decision for themselves.
Definitely.
Right, so if things do spike again, I, as a parent, I, as an individual, can say, you know what, things are getting really dicey again, I'm going to send my kid to school with a mask and ask them to do that. That has to be the place that public bodies get to, because this is an untenable, unsustainable situation. We cannot continue to make public health decisions for people when we're at a point where every other sector in the state chooses not to do so. There are vaccines available, there are medicines available, there are mitigation strategies available based upon individuals' risk. So, you know, to, to your point, Mr. Bishi, which is a good point, if that happens, while we may be a week behind, an individual could decide that very hour.
Yeah.
Which is the point that we're making, that we're returning this decision back to the individuals, back to the parents, back to the children, to decide what they think is best for themselves, based upon their personal risk level.
I think a person can agree that we should not have metrics and come to that conclusion for reasons different than what I've been hearing. So, I, I just, when this vote is taken, I don't want the presumption to be that I vote because I think the governor should make these choices.
I, I would like to second that.
My number one concern has always been one thing with regard to the ad hoc return to school committee, and that is that we are in school five days a week, four days, always. The only change in masking that I could see in the future that I would want us to be on top of is if the local transmission rate rises to such a degree that we can't keep our staff in the buildings. Don't think the Cali score is sensitive for that. I'm not aware of any metric that is, the best data I think we've had is our, our very own data. You know, we have seen very little in-school transmission. Now that's maybe because of the mitigation measures that we've taken, right? We can't really tease that apart. But, you know, as it stands, I, I'm, I don't feel that there's a utility really in saying, well, if some metric we aren't terribly comfortable with and haven't really fallen in love with, or some other metric that we haven't yet tested, someday says that we're in orange or red, that it triggers an automatic name asking. The, the, the data that I would want to know, you know, that would in my mind trigger a conversation of, you know, what mitigation methods are necessary, is the data related to our ability to fully staff our school and keep the buildings open, and keep our kids in front of their teachers. Hopefully engaged. And so for that reason, I, I'm, I'm comfortable going forward on March 7th mask optional without any metric that would automatically trigger a return to mandatory masking. But I think we continue to keep track of all of the relevant data, and the data that's relevant in my mind is our data in our buildings with our staff and our students. And that hyper-local focus that I have really is 180 degrees away from letting the governor tell me anything. So.
She will lead the way, right?
Well, you know, if, if an executive order is put in place, then I, my oath of office obliges me to not violate it, and I will not violate it. But absent, I'm not looking for guidance there. That, that's not so. So I, I was getting a little uncomfortable, no offense, Ryan, I was getting a little uncomfortable at where the, the, you know, the, the wave of support for abandoning metrics was dragging me in a place where I wasn't quite there. Yeah, I, I'm, I'm in favor of the motion. But, a- again, I, I would revisit it in a heartbeat if I, if, if what we were seeing was an inability to keep our, our schools open.
I think that's fair.
I think, Tricia, that's a really good point. I mean, I think, I, I feel like we, I still believe, whether it's something, you know, that we make it not a mandate per se, but if we say, look, these are the things that are going to tell us. I, I firmly believe that the public, the community deserves to understand what it is that we think are key. I don't think it's going to go over well, if all of a sudden, everything seems to be happening behind the scenes, then all of a sudden, guess what? Matt Horvath has to go to mask mandated, everybody's going to be, what happened? We still have to be really transparent with what we're monitoring. And I, I like the idea of it being kind of hyper-local to keeping schools open. If there's cases that we're just seeing next winter, whatever. I think as long as we know that we're, if we, if we are tracking it, then I think the public deserves to know that that's, that's what we think is important, so that they have the heads up, so that they know that they can make those decisions for their kids and decide to mask. And then if we decide, look, we have, like, we have to pull the plug, we have to go back to the mandatory for the next two weeks to get, because we're getting short on staff, and, you know, half the class is going to be out, and it's not going to be ideal school experience anyway, then I think we have that, that flexibility. But I still maintain that, that the community wants that predict, they want that predictability in that way, in understanding what are the things that are going to be potential triggers for those conversations. I think that's still really important.
So along those lines, I'm going to make a presumptuous assumption, if this were to pass, what is the mechanism or mask to come back on? Is it the board meeting, is it Dr. Mingle? I'm not going to say it's a metric, we got rid of those, this is presumptuous. So what is that? The board only meets, sometimes we, it's four weeks between we meet.
Sure.
That's, that's not, and we have to provide certain amount of notice, and so that's just unreasonable for this board. So it, it's an open question, I, I don't know the answer, I'm trying to, I just want to know, should we, should we hit this gate at a further point in time, that we've at least had the discussion of the board and know, okay, this is what we agreed on, this is what's going to happen? Like, this is our plan, should, should we, hopefully we never use this, like, let's, let's be real.
Sure.
Hopefully we never, never have to.
I, I think.
But in reality, we have to plan for all sorts of scenarios, you know, A, B, C through Z.
Yeah, I think if Dr. Mingle is seeing things on the ground, that he would like us to consider a change to the, the masking approach that we're taking, that that would come in the form, I would imagine, of a, of a recommendation from the superintendent at a board meeting.
My, my point along that was, the frequency in which we meet could be weeks.
Right.
You don't have weeks to react.
Well, to, to, to Mr. Bishi's point earlier, or to my response to Mr. Bishi's, Mr. Bishi's point order, I should clarify. We may not be able to, but individuals can start making those decisions for themselves. It's, it's, it's very easy for Dr. Mingle to, to send out information to parents and, and give them that, that updated information. I'm not in a position where I can babysit people and their own decisions and, and, and their decisions for their kids. And I don't think that, as a board, we need to, to, to do that. If, if something is getting severe enough that we need to make a reconsideration as a board, Dr. Mingle can bring that to us within the, you know, the next two weeks, we have a board meeting, we meet twice a month usually. Absent that, just like every other area in the state, we continue to allow for individuals to make those choices for themselves, depending on how things ebb and flow. So I would be comfortable personally with a consideration that's brought to us by Dr. Mingle, if he felt so inclined to recommend that we reconsider our position on masks.
Thank you for that. Back to, you're going to probably say what I'm going to say. Go ahead. No, no, all yours.
I was just going to say, or alternatively, we could ask the ad hoc return to school committee to actually lay out a plan to address that, so that Dr. Mingle wasn't individually put in a situation of having to draw that on his own conclusions. Have them decide how that looks, and they can bring a plan to us.
It's a great idea.
That was better than what I had to say.
Oh.
Thank you. Please, I was going to try to recap, but I lost myself.
So there was, there. There were questions about, what's the local data? And I don't, this was embedded in some slides that the ad hoc committee got, but maybe not everybody would have seen them. We, the, the, the whole discussion that's happening here is exactly the discussion we had of leadership and return to school, of trying to figure out where should this be? And like in the community and on the board and probably everywhere else, there are people on these committees that are on the entire spectrum as well of masks are fully optional to people who believe masks should stay on until the AAP says they shouldn't. Those organizations all still say masks should be on in schools in times of high transmission. So we tried to find out the answers to these questions as well. So our local experience this school year, as I mentioned in my opening comments, 62% of the school year was in lower moderate. It actually hasn't been low this year, it's always been moderate. During the weeks when we're in moderate, we have an average number of cases per week of four. That's not per school, that's four. District-wide. When it's, when it's high this year, the average number of cases was 23, so it's still district-wide, that's three point something for that, you know, you can do all that. When it's very high, it was 74. And so we only had three weeks that was very high, it was right around winter break, we all remember what those weeks were like. That was one of the question marks that was, people really trying to dig into is, if we take metrics out of it and just think about, when were we most worried about schools closing down? It was during that very high period right after winter break. So the other question we asked is, during those time periods, what was the impact on our staff levels? So here's the answer to that question. During, uh, when it was high last school year, when it was orange, uh, right before winter break, we needed 10 subs a day, that was last school year, right before winter break. Omicron was totally different, uh, as we all know. This year, the week before winter break, when it was high, that's orange, we needed 25 subs a day. And at the same time that we needed two and a half times as many subs, we covered less than half as many, we only covered 27%. We were still okay in a small window of time, that was when it was orange. When it was red, the week after winter break, we needed 39 subs a day out of our 200 or so certified teachers, and we only covered a third of them. So during the red weeks, right after winter break, is when we were closest to not being able to safely staff the schools. So there was a, a, a big dialogue and debate around, should it be red? And I know the metric, I guess the metric conversation, because that's when it was most high risk for us, you know? So, I, I like the idea, if, if the vote is no metric or, I don't want to restate it. It's optional at all levels. I like the idea of tasking the ad hoc committee with figuring out the next steps, because what none of us want to be in a situation is not being responsive in an emergency situation.
True.
Yeah.
If, if it went to the way it was right after winter break, you know, and we didn't have a meeting for three weeks, we're in a bad spot, where we either have to call an emergency meeting or something else. So I, I do agree that if the decision is, there's no automatic Cali score trigger, then there needs to be some outline process, so that we have clear guidance for us about what the expectations are for how we come back to you.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. I'm going to try. Masks optional, March 7th, not tied to a metric, in school and school buses. The ad hoc return to school committee will be tasked with coming up with process and or procedure on what that looks like if we ever, what that, what that bridge looks like to get us over that.
So Mr. Crowson, Mr. DeSey, I would have to agree to that modification.
I'm just understanding the summary.
So the, the, the modifications to the motion then would be, in addition to making masks optional at all levels, we are tasking the return to school committee to come up with a process or procedure by which we would be asked to reconsider that.
Uh, I don't know about.
Stance.
I was okay until you mentioned we, maybe the board. I think, I think that part, it would be left up to the return to school committee to say, it's this person, these people, this, I would just want to leave the door wide open.
But if it's a board action, it would need to be a board action again to turn that back, so we would still need to consider.
Right, so my, my understanding is that the back-to-school committee would come back to this board with a plan.
Recommendation.
Right, recommendation. Right, for the board to then say yea or nay to that. Is that correct?
Okay, I think we're on the same page.
Yeah.
Like you said.
So we're asking the back-to-school committee to come up with a, um, parameter?
Not necessarily come up with a plan, not a metric, but a plan.
I was going to say, what's the difference?
Should, should, should it, should it be needed again?
What's the process by which we are asked to reconsider that?
Loss of predictability of the Cali.
Sure.
Right, and, and I think, look, I, I don't, and again, I'm not on the committee, but I, I would imagine that the plan would be steeped in some sort of data that tells us that this plan needs to be enacted or brought back to the board to vote on.
And to Tricia's point, probably in relation to our ability to keep our schools fully open five days a week.
Right, right. Yeah.
Um, Mr. Hagel, dare you read it again?
Well, I, I have a sentence too, I'm going to re-sentence one first, because I think that one I have down. Motion to remove metrics from the July 2021 return to school plan and make masks optional.
Everyone good with that so far?
At all, at, at all levels? There's no level, you're right, you're right.
All right, now, now, this is just taking what I've heard from various board members. The ad, the ad hoc return to school committee will be tasked with they, to recommend a plan to the board should conditions require modifications.
Yeah. Motion, motion.
We had a second.
Second.
We had a good discussion.
It was good.
Great. Great.
Give it a whirl.
We're going to read it one more time. We're going to vote. Yeah, sure.
Motion to remove metrics from the July twenty twenty-one return to school plan and make masks optional. Ad hoc return to school committee will be tasked with a, to with a with to, shall be tasked to recommend a plan to the board should conditions require modifications.
Sir.
You're good with that? Is your motion?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I'm going to call this new business number one. All right. Mr. Bishi, yes. Mr. Crowson?
Proudly and happily, yes.
Mr. Desai?
Yes.
This is Damasio.
Yeah.
Ms. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Valentino?
Yes.
Mr. Weinstein?
Yes.
This is on.
Yes.
Mr. Brazil?
Yes.
The motion passes nine zero.
Is there any other new business, dare I ask? At this time, we will go into public commentary. This is our second of two, two of two for public commentary. Same rules apply. If you could kindly state your name, address, group affiliations, you'll have three minutes to provide the board with your comments. Please reflect all comments to myself. It would greatly be appreciated. We will start in the room. Are there any Ms. Sackett, please?
Stacy Sackett, Seven Trinity Place. I just want to thank you all for um, listening to reading the numerous emails, which I'm sure you were sick of getting, and listening to all of our concerns and taking that to heart because I think that it provides me at least with a sense of relief, knowing that I have some stake in my kids' own lives and their day to day occurrences and how they proceed going forward. And I feel like at least I, you know, have a little bit of ownership in that again. So that's, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sackett. Any would you mind stating your name and address first if you don't? It's presumed, yeah.
Hi, my name is Alina Burkes, fifty-one, Casaltra, South Warren, New Jersey. Just want to say thank you to Mr. Cross and Mr. Valentino, Mr. Weinstein for speaking up and bringing up common sense into this discussion. Right? As a parent, I greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments in the room? And we will now go to Zoom. Mr. Silver, if you could.
Hi, Adam Silver, thirty-five Quail Run. I just want to reiterate what everyone said. Thank you from the bottom of my heart to this board for recognizing how important this is going to be to get our children's lives back to some sense of normalcy. And I hope when cases go up, and they will, that we also recognize that masks really don't do anything. You know, you can look at Los Angeles, which has had masks outdoors this whole time, and cases skyrocketed. You know, causality, you know, you 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 got to stop equating causation with, you know, the remedy. And to just turn around and say cases are going up, we got to put masks back on. I think that's a mistake. So let's hope when when it does happen, rationality continues to prevail. So I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. It's much, much appreciated and and have yourselves a great evening.
Thank you, Mr. Silver. This is Drapper, Draper?
Draper, Linda Draper, Seventy A Briar Drive is, I I just wanted to say what everyone else said. Um, thank you. Thank you for listening. I felt like I was heard tonight. Thank you, Mr. Crossen, for making um, the motion. Um, have a good night.
Thank you, Mrs. Draper. Any other public commentary? In the room, on Zoom. Motion to close, motion of public commentary. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Close. Moving on to our next item, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion, second.
All those in favor? Pose. Abstention. Meeting has adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your time. Have a wonderful night.